...at house hunting search that this house was still on the market and had just done a price drop. And right away, I was like, oh, my God, that would make an awesome Oxford house. So I quickly had my realtor and the regional manager go look at the house with me, and we all agreed that, you know, it was meeting the requirements of an Oxford house. We talked about some things that I would want to do to it, to upgrade electrical, plumbing, and some of those kind of things before having them occupy the house. And so we proceeded with that, and we signed a contract. They had to file for the charter. I think part of the delay also, I can't speak for the other Oxford houses, all I can speak for is mine. But part of that delay is also, they have to have the house where they're going to live to file for, this is the house. They also have to have the guy, the group of folks that are going to live in the house, to know that they have enough to do the charter, what that reasonable housing is going to look like. I think ours was a pretty reasonable timing from the point of me purchasing it.
One minute.
Thank you. And for them to establish an Oxford house. You know, if I had more knowledge at that point, I would have, you know, probably tried to help persuade that we go, timely that met the city's needs. I still feel very good about having an Oxford house. I have been in and out of the Oxford house many times, announced, unannounced, just to share some things. It's got five bedrooms, four additional non-conforming bedrooms, so a total of nine. And the only reason those are non-conforming is the way your window opens is up and down versus out for escape, but it meets all of the city codes for them to still have folks sleeping in there. There's four and a half bathrooms. I know at the planning meeting, they talked about there only being two bathrooms. And we've made extra accommodations to make sure there was additional off-street parking to ensure any vehicle, those that did happen to have vehicles had parking, that we were not creating an additional street hazard. So I am really here to answer your questions.
Time.
Thank you very much. Questions? Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Bing, thank you for coming forward this afternoon. I do have a couple of questions, because I've had a number of people, and myself included, have some concerns about life safety with numbers of people in houses. And I was curious, since you mentioned that you, after purchasing the house, upgraded electric and plumbing, and then you've just given us different numbers than what we had in the report about bedrooms and bathrooms. And so I wanted to know, I think the residential codes are that all sleeping areas need two ways to egress, to get out, a door, a window, or something like that, and that they need smoke alarms. Do you know if all of the sleeping areas in the house have those?
Yes, they do have that. The area that would be considered the attic, because it's not a group home or commercial-type establishment, it does not require the additional steps to vacate the attic level. When I spoke with the city, they told me as long as a fire department could get to them through that window, that was all that was required.
Yeah, I'm just looking at residential, not commercial codes.
Right, yes.
So they have, they have smoke alarms.
It does have smoke alarms where necessary.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Raybold.
Just a couple of questions. Thank you, Ms. Bing, for coming and speaking. Were you aware that there were other Oxford houses within blocks of, or within?
I did not know where those actually are located, but I did know there were other Oxford houses in Lincoln. When I learned that there were others in this neighborhood, and I know at the planning meeting, it was asked, you know, why are so many in this neighborhood? I can tell you, a lot of it has to do with the size of house square footage that you can get for a particular price. As I said in my letter, my rent is not based on the number of folks they put in the house. My rent is based on what I pay in a mortgage on the house, the upkeep of the house, and I determine that rent. And then that is the fair housing when they put whatever number they put in there based on the bedrooms, what they end up having for a rent. Because some of these folks still maintain a house that they hopefully plan to go back to. They have families, and, you know, it's, they've made some bad life decisions that now have them going through a treatment, ending up in an Oxford house. And they may have a mortgage on top of paying rent at this Oxford house until they can get back to their family.
So do you feel comfortable, based on the lease language that you signed, that you will be receiving the rent that was established?
I get it. Five days usually in advance, they're so good.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for this testifier? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. And if there's any other questions after you hear opponents, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. Next testifier.
Hello, my name is Scott Sexton, grateful recovering alcoholic, 1806 D Street. I had a whole thing written here I was gonna say, but, you know, in November of 2020, I had just left the hospital after a stay that extended into weeks, not days. While I detoxed from alcohol, I was penniless, homeless, unemployable, and really rock bottom. I'd already been at the mission, I'd been through treatment, and really, it looked like death was my next option. Through amazing love and support of my family, I was able to secure a bed in an Oxford house. I was 46 years old, and I shared a bedroom with a 43-year-old man, and I lived in a home with 10 other guys. And it was the happiest I've ever been. In the last 20 months and 26 days, I've secured employment, I've purchased a vehicle, I moved out of the Oxford house, first with other gentlemen from the Oxford house to continue my sober living with, with support. I now have a beautiful two-bedroom apartment, four blocks away from the Oxford, Oxford house where I lived, because I love the Near South neighborhood. The people, the energy, the sense of community and neighborhood. I've moved out of Lincoln a few times, the city's always brought me back. I've lived all over this town, and Near South has always brought me back. To see myself and my brothers in my Oxford house grow as members of the community, in recovery, with their families, as she just mentioned, has been one of the greatest privileges of my life. And I scrapped this because there was a few things mentioned that I wanted to address. You, Councilwoman Raybold, you discussed the Oxford as a financial incentive or profitability. Any funds from our Oxford house, the rent paid by the tenants, by the client, not clients, the residents, anything above and beyond rent or bills, we use to improve our house. We buy furniture. We have grillouts, we invite the other Oxford houses over. That money stays in the house. There is a system of checks and balances so that not one person controls the funds. I was the treasurer for six months. We had two other check signers who were definitely not me. We have, as mentioned before, the democratic process. Officers in the House are elected, the president, the secretary, the treasurer, and the coordinator, who handles chores and house upkeep. Through this program, I was able to relearn the tools that I had lost through my addiction, general life skills. I make my bed every day now. For 45 years, my mom tried to get me to make my bed. I never did it once. I make my bed, I iron my clothes, I fold my laundry, same thing, sorry. I do my own hair. I mean, you know, I think I'm doing all right for myself. But believe me when I tell you that none of this would be possible without the Oxford house and the community that built for me. One of my brothers, who actually got me the job that I have now, is now the regional manager for my company. He manages 18 franchises that do over $30 million a year in business. Another one of my coworker, or coworkers, another one of my brothers from my house, after struggling for years of two-month jobs and then two-month relapses, has now maintained employment for nearly 18 months. He is the lead salesman for his company. He's been promoted twice in the year that he's been on the regular sales force. He's now managing a team of over 20 people, doing, I wouldn't even know how much business nationwide.
One minute.
That's all I have to say about that. If anybody has any questions about the day-to-day for a resident of the Oxford house, I'd love to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Sexton. Chairman, or Councilman Pikius.
Thank you, Scott, for, for coming down. We surely appreciate it. You know, a lot of the feedback that I've gotten from, from neighbors has been actually directly related to that sort of day-to-day living and what that might look like. Can you describe your experiences living in an Oxford house and what that day-to-day living looks like from a, for example, a neighbor's perspective?
From a neighbor's perspective, what you probably see is a lot of introverted, uncomfortable people who look a little lost and confused at where they are in their lives. I smoked cigarettes. I would stand out on my porch and smoke, and I would see my neighbor out there smoking on her porch, and it took me three months to even say hi to her, because of the shame and the embarrassment of the position that I had put myself into my life. However, once I got over that, we became friends. Myself and other members of our house often made food for her, she made food for us. We keep our lawns tidy. The Oxford house that I lived in was in the 20th and A Street area, so there's shooter bottles, cans, general garbage throughout the neighborhood. Every day, I would see members of my house coming from the bus stop or, or coming up from their cars, picking something up off the lawn. We're contributing members of society. When you live in the Oxford house, you're required to have a job, a full-time job. If you don't, at least in my house, if you don't, then you're required to volunteer 20 hours a week. There are people who not only maintain jobs, but also volunteered at Matt Talbot, at Food Net, through their churches, a variety of things. But as far as the neighbor goes, it's much like a house of college students, you know, we go to work, different schedules. There's no partying at our house. We have curfew during the week, depending on the house, or depending on what the guidelines of the charter are. It's 10 or 11 o'clock at night. On the weekends, it's midnight or 1:00, I think. So there's no late-night extracurriculars. We're just a group of guys living in a house, trying to take that next step in our journey.
And could you also discuss, we've heard testimony already, but I think for, for a lot of folks, it's difficult to, it can be difficult to have an understanding as, as it appears other folks have, that this is a family unit living situation. Can you speak to that at all? Because I know that there's definitely a difficulty in understanding that definition, if that makes sense.
Absolutely. For many of us in addiction and in recovery, our behaviors have pushed our families and our friends to their limits. And for their own protection and their own well-being, they can no longer be a part of our lives. As a result, it's a very lonely island to be on. Living in this group setting provides you with people who have shared experiences. One of the great things about the Oxford house, I believe you asked about a new group of, of residents moving in every seven to nine months. That's not how it works. The house that I moved into, there was a gentleman who'd been there for over three years, another guy who was there for two years, a couple more around 18 months, a handful of six to nine months, and then a few newbies. As a newbie, you rely on the experience and strength and hope of those people who've been through it and are now living successfully. You know, they provide guidance to you on a day-to-day basis. They help you handle situations that, when they previously arose, they may lead you to use drugs or alcohol. But they, they help you with the coping skills that you've learned. Most of us have gone through treatment at least once, some of us many times. But you learn tools to help deal with those situations. But learning tools in theory versus having the support to implement them in, in practice are two entirely different things. So your brothers in the house, they help you apply those lessons that you've learned from their mistakes. One of my best friends in the house, he had over a year of sobriety. This was before I knew him, and then he relapsed, and he was gone for six months, came back to the Oxford house. He now has almost three years. And I leaned on him so heavily during my first three months, four months at the Oxford house, until I finally felt myself with the strength to reach out to somebody new who had moved in and try to help them take those steps to make those improvements. So it really is a family, and by having that kind of support network, it, it has allowed me to reconnect with my blood family. But these are brothers that I'll have for the rest of my life, as many as, in as great a regard as, as any blood family member that I have.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that. And that's the only, the end of the questions I have. I just wanted to say congratulations.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilman Powers.
I just want to say the same thing. Congratulations on your recovery, and thank you for coming out and sharing your story publicly like that. It's not an easy thing to do, and you should be very proud of yourself.
It's a lot easier than the life I was living before.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Next testifier is, come on up. If we could have two at a time, that would be great. We'll keep moving through. Just go ahead.
I'm Delonte Clark Brown. I live at 1220 South 20th Street. I was also, I actually lived with Scott at Oxford House on 1900 A Street. I, I moved in there, I think, May 5th of last year, 2021, and I stayed there for about six or seven months. I just came to, I guess, give the perspective of somebody who very much loves the Near South neighborhood and has been very involved in the community, getting to know neighbors, helping out with projects, helping with lots of different things, you know, what have you. And just came to speak about Oxford House as Scott said, a brotherhood. And, and, I mean, I don't mean to make it sound like some fraternity, but in, in a lot of ways, it is. And I wanted to emphasize that this isn't a halfway house. These are people who came to Oxford House because they wanted sobriety. And you're not court-ordered to be there, you're not mandated. I had nowhere to go. I had been a burden to my friends and family for years before that. I had struggled with alcoholism since, since I was 16, and, you know, in a very, very bad way. And hospitalized several times, I'd been to treatment. I guess this last time was my second time out before it really stuck. And I lend almost all of my success to both the treatment and Oxford afterward, and gaining those friendships. Scott, you know, he's one of my best friends still to this day. There are several others who I know, our house was a very strong house. Most of us still have our sobriety, which, if you know anything about recovery, is not usual. Going just to AA or just going to treatment doesn't have high statistics as far as recidivism and staying sober. So I think there's something to having people to lean on, and, and more than anything, doing it, doing it for yourself. The, the life that we lived beforehand, we didn't have much autonomy. We were vagrants, living on and by other people's resources and money, or, or, you know, getting by with lies or, or whatever, whatever we needed. But the Oxford house gave us our own choices, our own agency. And, and I think a lot of that, when you're worried about, you know, people making, taking advantage of certain things or whatever, this, I just wanted to be understood that this, for anybody in the Oxford house, is, you know, not, not only just like affordable housing and a, a place to stay, but a chance for redemption, where they didn't have it before. And people take the responsibilities within that, within the houses very seriously. It's democratically run, like you said. I was, my house is comptroller. I took it seriously, just as anybody else in my house did with their positions. Also, I did want to address, I can't remember which council member asked the, about testing. We do test at Oxford House. It is not a requisite that you get tested. It is a requisite after suspicion. So if you, like Representative Oxford mentioned, if you, it's hard to fool other addicts, you, you know, and so.
One minute.
You, if, if you come into the house and people suspect you, then we will move along with testing. If you fail, we have a house meeting, and you will immediately be voted out. That, that's just how it works. But all the people I lived with, and many of the people I know in other houses, have found success, many in the Near South neighborhood and have gotten involved. I was unemployable, I had no job, I had no home. I now have had a job for a year and a half, have been sober for a year and a half. I manage 35 people at the company that I work at, have been promoted, which is something that I could never have dreamed of beforehand. And that story is the same for many of the people that I lived with and still call very dear friends. And that's all I had. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Questions?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I just want to.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Bowers.
Again, I just want to say the same thing that I said earlier. Congratulations on your recovery. That takes a lot of strength to come and share your story, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next testifier, please.
Hello. My name is Chelsea Aikenberger, and I live at 1716 B Street. I also have my master's and bachelor's in social work, and I've been sober for one year and nine months. As a neighbor to the Oxford house and a resident of the city who knows the value of affordable, supportive living, I'm asking you to approve this reasonable accommodation for 14 individuals to live in a sober community at 1923 B Street. I'm concerned by the rhetoric I hear from my neighborhood and around the city that boil down individuals living in Oxford homes to labels such as felons and addicts. These individuals are complex and have many identities, just like the rest of us. Those identities include neighbors, family members, friends, acquaintances, coworkers, and they are members of our community. Above all else, these individuals are human beings, and they are asking for your help in recovery. I ask that you not give in to fear. I ask that you see this as a step in transforming Lincoln into a more inclusive community. Lincoln is in a housing crisis, and we can't build our way out of it. We need creative, adaptable, affordable housing solutions for all Lincoln residents. Basic affordable housing is fundamentally necessary for any individual to achieve personal goals and ultimately to thrive. We need housing options that empower individuals in their recovery, and we must welcome them as vital members in our community. As a neighbor to the Oxford home that poses, or, as a neighbor, the Oxford home poses no undue burden to me or to my neighborhood. If an issue does arise, I hope that we, as neighbors, can handle it together through conversation, creativity, and connection. We have so much to gain, and by embracing wellness opportunities such as this Oxford home, we only lose our assumptions and our fear. I believe another world is possible, where everyone's basic needs are met and our wellness is prioritized. For that to become a reality, we need everyone to be part of it. As city council members, please do your part in welcoming and empowering these individuals in our community by approving this reasonable accommodation for a sober-living family at 1923 B Street. Please support healing for a stronger Lincoln, a Lincoln that prioritizes people over property. Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. Questions for Ms. Aikenberger? All right, saying none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next testifier, please.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Ally Christensen, and I'm the community organizer at Civic Nebraska, located at 530 South 13th Street. I'm here today on behalf of Collective Impact Lincoln, which is a partnership between Civic Nebraska and Nebraska Appleseed. Together, we support resident-led change in six core neighborhoods in Lincoln and take action on policy that is responsive to our neighbors' needs. We're here today to ask that you vote in support of this reasonable accommodation request by Oxford House Zion Crest. As a community organizer, I get to work alongside residents of Everett and Near South neighborhoods to advocate for the change that they want to see, with safe and affordable housing at the center. And as a resident and renter in the Everett neighborhood, I've seen firsthand the beauty of being welcomed to the neighborhood, and I hope that I can do the same for new residents of Oxford House. As an organizer and a neighbor, I'm really thankful for this opportunity to share with you why it's necessary and beneficial to our community to approve this reasonable accommodation request. First and foremost, this reasonable accommodation request has been recommended by the Planning Commission and Planning Department. According to the Planning Commission, or the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission Staff Report on Page 1, "The Fair Housing Act requires cities make reasonable accommodations to the zoning code when the requested accommodation will ensure equal opportunity to individuals' disabilities to live in the neighborhood they choose. Requests for accommodation are not reasonable when the accommodation imposes on city an undue financial or administrative burden. The applicant has demonstrated that it is entitled to reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act, and city has not at this time found, identified evidence that the accommodation is unreasonable." The reports put together by the Planning Commission and Planning Department clearly illustrate why this reasonable accommodation request should be permitted. And I'm disappointed that these previous hearings have fostered a platform to debate the character of the folks living at Oxford House. The stigma against mental health and substance abuse disorders already limits access to housing because a landlord can deny a, a tenant housing just because of a drug conviction. On top of other forms of housing discrimination, which I know y'all have heard us talk about before, this is part of a larger housing access issue. For folks in recovery, there's simply far too few places for them to go. One of the foundational steps we can take as a city to expand access to affordable and safe housing is to welcome good housing providers. When we have a housing provider like Oxford House, who not only doesn't engage in this discrimination, but welcomes folks in recovery and provides resident-led avenues for them to lift themselves up communally and heal, we as a city can't just say no and turn those folks away, certainly not because of concerns rooted in classism or racism by a slim minority of homeowners in a majority rental neighborhood. We as a city are better than that. So I urge you, on behalf of Collective Impact Lincoln, to vote in support of this reasonable accommodation request as recommended by the Planning Commission and Planning Department, and as it furthers our city's efforts to improve access to housing. And I have here with me, I have a map, I have one for each of you if you'd like. Just to make sense of the percentage of rentals, Near South neighborhood is made up of four census tracts. And so I made a map that overlays the census tracts where they intersect with the neighborhood. So you can see that the census tract or the part of the neighborhood that 1923 B Street is in is 85% renter occupied. The 12 blocks west is 96% renter occupied.
Do you want to turn that up?
Oh, of course. So this is upside down. And so the majority, I, of these census tracts included our majority renters. And so I just brought this here with you to make sense of the numbers being shared today. And this data is taken from the 2020 American Community Survey, five-year estimate. And I'm here if you have any questions, too.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Christensen?
Yeah, great.
Councilwoman Washington?
Ms. Christensen, thank you for coming down. You've mentioned a couple of times about affordable housing and Oxford House, and I was just curious, where do you see that the Oxford house provides a benefit in affordable housing, and how does it perhaps negatively affect affordable housing?
Right, that's a good question. Thank you for asking that, Councilperson Washington. Just from, I heard actually from my neighbor Jess, and I know she can speak later. But just from reports of folks currently living in the Oxford house, that the rent is $500 a month, which is quite affordable. The average median income for the, at least the census tracts that I am most familiar with, which are 20.01 and 20.02, or 20.01, this one, is about $24,000 a year, and so 500 is well under the. is about twenty-four thousand a year and so five hundred is well under the, a third of somebody's monthly income. And so having, that's one, that this is actually affordable housing for folks living currently in the neighborhood. And having varied forms of housing is in line with the comprehensive plan. So having, I know others who are experts in this can share more and I defer to the Planning Commission, Planning Department, who have recommended this. But my understanding is that having this just first is really beneficial because it gives folks a place to live who otherwise would be turned away from other housing providers and who would likely have to pay more rent in the neighborhood since rent has been going up for many neighbors.
And do you know if that's five hundred dollars per person or five hundred dollars for the entire house for the month?
Per person.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next testifier.
Hello again. My name is Jess Gieske. I live at twelve hundred South Twentieth Street. I've lived on the same block for just over two decades and I'm around the corner from Oxford House Lioncrest at nineteen twenty-three B Street. Once again, I come before you in support of reasonable accommodations for the people living in this home. In my previous testimony, I mentioned that people do not get well unless they have safe, affordable, and supportive accommodations. Oxford House Lioncrest actually provides these things for people so that they can get well. Oxford House Lioncrest also comfortably accommodates the people that reside there. While the city and local agencies are spending millions of dollars to address issues pertaining to affordable housing, these residents are working, paying their own living expenses, supporting each other in the same way that a family should. And they're also creating the type of environment that fosters personal growth and sets their peers up for successfully overcoming the obstacles that they have faced. I also mentioned that prior to the last public hearing, I had gone over to meet my new neighbors. I've since had the opportunity to get to know them a little better. Last week, I brought in some perennials, a few truckloads of mulch, and the guys and I spent a whole afternoon beautifying the landscape and planting a flower garden. I helped with the design and layout, but the gentlemen were the ones who enthusiastically were moving rocks, digging holes, planting and mulching, and adding landscape lighting. They're very proud of their work and the place looks fantastic. And now I have a much clearer picture of just how well this household works together to maintain their home and support each other in sobriety. Over the last couple of weeks, I've also learned a few other things about the Near South neighborhood, census tracts. The Near South actually includes a couple of different census tracts and it's important to look at this data when addressing housing and zoning issues. Nineteen twenty-three B Street lies within Census Tract Seventeen Block Group One. Our census tract includes, give or take, two thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight housing units, of which eighty-five percent are renter occupied. Eighty percent of the structures are multifamily dwellings. Nineteen twenty-three B Street is a single-family dwelling, which for tax purposes is valued at four hundred and five thousand. The median value for an owner-occupied home in that block group is two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. Eighty-nine percent of the homes located within Block Group One are valued below four hundred thousand dollars, with thirty-seven percent of the homes in this block group valued between three hundred thousand and four hundred thousand. This means that for real estate values and property tax purposes, nineteen twenty-three B Street, as a single-family rental, compares to owner-occupied homes within the top eleven percent, which are valued above four hundred thousand. This means that the owner pays a substantial amount in property taxes while the occupants renting this stately home have access to affordable housing. It's worth noting that many similarly sized homes converted to multifamily dwellings, such as my own, within the same block group have lower property valuations, but residents living in them pay more in rents. This is important to consider in a census tract where thirty-five percent of the people live at or below the poverty line and an even higher percentage struggle to afford housing. Nineteen twenty-three B Street is a unique situation in that it provides higher tax revenue for the city, but also affordable accommodations for the people living there. I also believe it's important to mention that seventy-four percent of the workers in my census tract drive alone to their jobs. While some of the residents at nineteen twenty-three B Street drive vehicles, they are more likely to fall within the nine percent that carpool, five percent that walk, five percent that bike, and the four percent that take public transportation or other modes of transportation. I believe lowering our dependence on cars falls neatly into the mayor's climate action plan and reduces the number of vehicles parked on the street.
One minute.
There's a lot of interesting data for the Census Tract Seventeen, which you're welcome to take a look at, but my point is, I don't believe that granting reasonable accommodations for nineteen twenty-three B Street will create any sort of burden for our city, our taxpayers, or the census tract. In fact, I feel that this type of housing is an asset to my neighborhood and falls right in line with the goal of preserving the uniqueness of our urban neighborhoods, which is outlined in our twenty-fifty Comprehensive Plan. The group of people fits right into the diverse community, which is the Near South. I see no reason that this Oxford Home and similar living arrangements can't be seamlessly woven into the fabric of our neighborhood. So I'm asking you today for your vote in favor of granting reasonable accommodations for my neighbors. As a resident of the Near South, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have for me. And does anybody have any questions?
Questions from the council?
No questions.
All right. Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Next testifier, please.
My name is Saul Gieske. I, I'm a longtime resident of the neighborhood, not quite as long as my wife, but like seventeen years I've lived there and about twenty-two years I've been a regular. I'm in support of the Oxford House for a handful of reasons. This is going to be pretty quick. I think that you should have the right to choose the area of town that you live in and that you should be able to choose an area of town that fits your personal needs. As a person who rides his bike nearly every day, I've always purposely chosen to live within about two miles of the downtown area. It gave me access to buses for years that I used and it's a pretty quick ride to just about anywhere that I need to go to. I don't believe that a person's background or economic status should be detrimental to them being able to live in the area that best suits their needs. And I do think that backgrounds can impact affordable housing pretty heavily because if you have maybe a spotty work history or a criminal record, that just increases the difficulty in you finding a place in your price range. I respect a person's right to privacy. It's not really any of my business what their background is and I don't plan on asking any of them. I didn't have to take an interview when I moved into the neighborhood and I'm assuming nobody else did either. And also, I defer to the Oxford House, I'm sorry, I don't know if it's an association or a company or whatever, as to whether or not this is the sort of living environment that works for somebody because they do have decades of experience in it. And regardless of whether or not maybe they're doing one or another thing that some people might question, they've got decades of experience and they know what they're doing and they know what will work best for the people that they're trying to help. I do also want to point out that, like I think somebody else mentioned, just because we have a rule that says no more than three unrelated people in a house doesn't mean that anybody actually sticks to that. Right about the same time that that law passed here in Lincoln, I was living with maybe between four and six roommates. None of us were related. Three of us were on the lease and we did that for a couple of years and nobody ever made any complaints about it. I'm sure we were not alone. I'm sure that sort of thing happens all the time. So that's really about it. I hope that you'll grant the accommodation and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Questions for the testifier? All right. Thank you. Please come up. Come up. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Amanda Gott. I live at nineteen oh one B Street. And nineteen oh one B Street is two doors down from Oxford House Lioncrest and I'm here to tell you that the residents of the house are very good neighbors. I live, I can see what's going on at the house. I hear what's going on at the house. I have a patio in my backyard and my husband and children and I like to eat on our patio a lot. We eat many dinners on our patio and we can see and hear the backyard of Oxford House quite clearly. And we don't see or hear anything going on that is concerning. I'm a pretty nosy neighbor too, so I'm looking. I'm like, what's going on? And I don't see or hear anything that is concerning. Likewise, the residents of Oxford House Lioncrest, you know, they hang out on the porch. I don't see or hear anything that worries me. I am not concerned or worried about letting my children play in the yard or walk up and down the block or ride their bikes up and down the block. If you come to the neighborhood, you'll see my kids out. They're those kids that are out riding their bikes up and down the block. And I'm not worried about letting them walk past or ride past the Oxford House. I'm not afraid to walk past the Oxford House. The gentlemen that live there seem nice. I say hi, they say hi. They're neighbors. The house looks great. The property looks wonderful. Thank you, Jess, for your help with that. I also want to point out that some, it has been mentioned before that the previous residents were students. And I am surprised that all of a sudden there's so much concern about who's living in the house because when the students lived there, there were loud parties and drinking all the time and people coming over and crowding the yard and the lawn and having loud drinking parties. The police were called on more than one occasion. The neighbors were not up in arms. Each of the students that lived in the house had their own vehicle. Parking is much easier on B Street now that the Oxford House is there. So I'm a little bit perplexed as to why all of a sudden there's so much concern around this. I am happy with the change from students living there to the Oxford House residents living there. My husband is in agreement and we're very happy that with our entire family, we have, we have these new neighbors. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Questions? Comments? All right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Serena Frit. I live in the Near South neighborhood. I'm here to ask for your support in providing this reasonable accommodation for the Oxford House Lioncrest. I wanted to just say, it's been brought up how, how much the neighborhood is renters, right? And I think it's significant to know that as we prepare to hear the other side of this issue coming from a neighborhood association made up of homeowners, which are in fact the minority in this neighborhood. And the concerns that they have around the Oxford House and the necessity to means-test people as they work through sobriety is a problem, right? Everybody deserves a safe and sober place to live and feel supported.
It's okay. Take your time.
And I ask that you do that for this. I'm happy there in my neighborhood. I ask that more Oxford Houses, I hope more Oxford Houses find their way in other communities and not just the Near South neighborhood, but all over our town because we need them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next testifier, please.
Jason Abel's, twelve hundred South Twenty-third Street. I'm going to speak in support of this as well. Pretty much everything has been said that I could imagine. When I was here last, I talked a little bit about how this is an ongoing public health issue that we have. And historically, as a society, we treat that with criminalization and with punishment. We have spent for decades endlessly on cops and judges and jails and prisons. We've got parole and probation, electronic monitoring, problem-solving courts, building mental health wards in prisons and jails, but not out in the community to help people. And again, we've got a dozen or so people that want to live together and try to help themselves because nobody else will. And I'm wondering what other alternatives we have for those folks that don't put someone in a cage. As you can, as you will hear from the testimony of those against, we can't even let them live in a neighborhood that's almost eighty percent renter. Where are they supposed to go? What are they supposed to do? What else are we going to do for them? It's a very, very small ask. That's about all I have to say. You're going to hear from a few folks that are against this. I think the Neighborhood Association has about a hundred dues-paying members. I think there's twenty-five people on the board. And I can't remember. I think there was eighteen signatures or something they had opposing this when they were here last. So just keep that in mind when we talk about the neighborhood that almost eleven thousand people live in, who and what we're talking about.
Thank you. Any questions for Jason? Any questions, comments? All right. Thank you again for being back today. All right. We will now, after, council, are you good? Or do you want to take a break? Or we can finish this? Or do you want to?
Can we see how many people are going to speak in opposition?
Yes. We've been asked if you, speaking in opposition, would you please raise your hand? Okay. Okay. I'm going to need a break. Okay. Why don't we take a ten-minute break and we'll take the next testifiers at ten after five, which is a little bit more than a ten-minute break, and we'll reconvene at five-ten, please. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, if you could, thank you, catch us up.
Okay. We are still under Section 5 Public Hearing Resolutions on Item 5A, Continuing Public Hearing. Any of those that are opposing testimony, please step forward and testify. We do have two microphones available, so if two can come up at a time, that would be greatly appreciated. And as a reminder also, if you can please state your name and address, that would be great, or if not, sign in on the sign-in sheet.
Good afternoon, almost evening. Thank you for your time. Kathy Wilken, 1942 A Street, Near South resident and member of the Near South Neighborhood Association. First and foremost, I want to thank and support those who had the courage to step forward and tell their stories. This is nothing against what they have gone through, and alcoholism and drug addiction runs through my family like a racehorse, and so I absolutely understand the death and destruction that that can warrant. But today, I just wish to address that the City Council, you have the power to change the course of the Near South Neighborhood with your vote and the decision that you make. And in many ways, the course has already been changed, and this is what we'll address today. And so I do wish to just make a couple of statements. You received a letter dated August 11th from Carmen Maurer, 1929 C Street, and she could not be here today and granted me permission to put just a few points on the public record, so thank you so much. Because of the precedent you set for the whole city, we ask that you delay your decision and confer with your counterparts in other cities where reasonable approaches to the Oxford model have emerged. We ask that you delay your decision until you've had time to consider how this process can be conducted pre-occupancy, instead of granting Oxford House and its like the ability to craft its own zoning law. Base the process upon evidence supporting the best interests of the disabled residents, the community, and the land use plans you've approved, and not on the size of the property and potential owner-operator revenue. Delay your decision until you've conducted a careful and strategic assessment of the city's definition of family and group home. Is a seven to nine-month shared rental arrangement equivalent to family? Let the term "reasonable" have meaning when used in the law. The federal government this summer authorized state and local government to define how and for whom a family is created. The implications of this new ruling are far-reaching. It would seem you now have much greater authority to grant, to define family than you did a few months ago. Please consider this and take advantage of your newly granted power. We ask that you delay your decision until you're assured that the process the city uses to determine reasonable accommodation is legally sound and followed. While your established process requires evidentiary documentation to support these kinds of accommodation determinations, when we've inquired, we're unable to confirm the necessary documentation was obtained by the city. Specific health inquiries are confidential, but we've received no assurances that the city sought any information supporting the nature of the residents' disabilities, or if the requested waiver addressed the needs and best interests of the disabilities. How is the necessary documentation and accommodation secured as the Oxford renters continually join and leave the group? Please delay your decision until you've incorporated reasonable steps to ensure the Oxford residents present no danger to themselves or the other residents or the neighborhood. Evaluate and incorporate measures to address the impact of any zoning waiver on neighborhood parking and our infrastructure. We estimate that over 30% of the residents in one relevant block live in two nearly adjacent Oxford houses. Create and store accurate data related to group homes and Oxford House-type facilities. It's been a struggle for us to collect information taking many hours away from homework and family. Valuable neighborhood initiatives have gone on the backburner, and time has been diverted to this matter. Our sense is that adequate and reliable data necessary to support legal compliance and enforcement does not now exist. Fifty years ago, our Neighborhood Association was formed to address population density and the impact on infrastructure, zoning regulations, and diminished quality of the housing stock.
One minute.
Thank you. We are asking you to be our champion in this regard. We know Lincoln can do better than the Oxford House proposes in that model. We know others have accomplished it, and we look to you to help us through this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions? Right off for Kathy?
All right. Thank you very much.
Next testifier, please.
Hello, I'm Deb Cosgrove. I live at 1900 C Street. I am a member of the Near South Neighborhood Association Board. However, I am here as an individual and as a neighbor. I've got prepared remarks, but I would like first to respond to comments that have been made here before. I've been listening carefully. I wanted to point out that Attorney Scott Moore, in his testimony, referenced the home as a group home, for which there are very clear guidelines as to spacing and as to requirements to register with the city. He also stated that the only reason he is here in support of 1923 B Street and has not asked for nor represented any of the other Oxford houses is because the Oxford House only makes requests for accommodation when the neighbors demand it. He's also requested reasonable accommodation. He equated reasonable accommodation request and compliance to applying for a liquor license. However, I would argue that if a bar owner served liquor before applying for and receiving the license, they would be shut down, as opposed to the Oxford House model, which says, let's establish the house, and then if the neighbors or the government demands, then we'll apply for accommodation to comply with the local law. I am unclear responding to my neighbor Saul's comment about since no one abides by the family determination, why should this house be different? My response would be since very, not very few, since some people do not abide by the speed limits, should we abolish the speed limits? The reasoning does not follow. I'm also unclear as to why the men and women can only recover when they're labeled as family. Why can't they recover if they were considered part of transitional living or part of a group home? And the only conclusion I have come to in my limited knowledge so far is the reason they call themselves a family is specifically to avoid and evade the local zoning restrictions. When they ask for reasonable accommodation, it seems to be what they're asking for is simply a waiver of all accommodations, of all zoning requirements. And I would argue that instead, reasonable accommodation might look like requiring them to comply with spacing restrictions for group homes and transitional living, and following the Section 8 housing requirements in the Keating memo, which identify that there should be two people per bedroom, per legal bedroom, regardless of the way the windows open. There was also comment here that the Oxford House is not a corporation, they are a not-for-profit entity. However, the people or the owners of the Oxford House homes themselves are in fact primarily corporations. They are LLCs. They are operating a commercial enterprise in the neighborhood without any such allowance to do that. I understand there may be altruistic reasons for that, but I also understand at $500 rent per month, that's $7,000, and that sounds like it's a nice investment amount. I would be happy with that amount. I don't think I'd quit my day job, but I might. I would argue that, well, not argue is a bad word. I have no problem with the people that live there, with the concept of affordable housing. I love the Near South because we have all of those things. And I am friends with many of the people that live in the apartments around me. I am surrounded by apartments. I socialize with them. I've had them to my house. I go to their homes. But I fail to see how this is equated to being woven into the fabric of the neighborhood. The people that have rented, thank you, the people that I know that are renters have been in the neighborhood for a very long period of time, many, for decades that they've rented, and they choose to do that for whatever reason, as opposed to neighbors who are in the homes for sometimes very short terms, even less than the term they would have to live if they were actually renting a home and signing a lease agreement for a year. And so the in and out, there was counsel not too long ago about Airbnb and restrictions on that. While this certainly is longer term than that, I would argue that some of the same concept applies there.
Thank you. Yes, any questions for Deb? Any comments? Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next testifier, please.
All right, Rena Inglehard, 1909 Washington Street. So I just want to point out that I didn't hear anyone call anyone a felon at the last hearing. No one called Lincoln Skid Row. No one said Oxford brings crime. They just brought up existing crime in the neighborhood that might not be beneficial. Planning originally voted against the accommodation, but then was reminded of the threat of litigation and voted for it once they had their additional missing member. I'm on the Near South Board, but I'm not representing them. I'm a renter, a renter, so that's a correction there. Concentration of these dwellings and neighborhood character is an entirely different issue than ADA. Oxford knows what they're doing by framing it so they can just say you denied them reasonable accommodations despite maybe having a larger reason. So what about the people who are on, what about the others who are waiting for Section 8, they're on the Section 8 bidding list, or are ineligible? This takes away homeownership opportunities, also known as access to wealth and equity for those who can't bid. Outbid Oxford, and we buy houses for cash, property management companies and LLCs, an issue specifically ailing Near South, the most diverse neighborhood. Oxford has many modest homes in their directory. Affordable housing isn't just renting and paying someone else's mortgage and lining their pockets. A friend of mine did actually bid on 1923B and was outbid because the home wasn't going to be a business for her. You have to have, you have to be making money to want to open something like this. Hemisphere Building Co., which is Richton Park, observed that the FHA bars discrimination against handicapped people by reason of their handicap rather than by what they have in common with others, such as limited money to spend on housing. Anyone would benefit from rents split 15 ways, so what about them? There are going to be 10 to 14 men in 27th and Washington's new Michael House. We're talking two bathrooms. Context is important, so for me, it's not really about this one house, it's about what you paved the way for. Neighbors report that the Washington Michael House residents currently sleep on the main floor or in the basement where there are no designated bedrooms because the second floor is too hot and has one supplemental air conditioner. You can go look for yourself. How can people call that supportive, safe, or affordable housing? A neighbor had to take the man at the house to another house because he was dropped off at the wrong one and had no ride. $700 a month there for a bed that's not guaranteed, perhaps one in a hot sunroom. That's what you may open the door for. The entire house I rent is $775 a block from 1900A on Washington Street. $500 for a bed, a bed at Oxford. If AA is coming into the house, that is treatment. That fits the definition of a group home. Why are they against this definition and oversight? That would be a simple solution. A college student could theoretically benefit from living with other college students and be motivated for school, especially if it means cheap rent to pay for school. Families aren't just men. Why can Oxford claim 80% of their residents stay sober? Mayor Bill Cruz of the Planning Commission said that's unrealistic in a study by the Journal of Substance Abuse Treatment in February 2011 actually attributes Oxford's recovery rate to being in a 12-step program. Does Oxford operate first and ask later because they know if they asked every time, it would burden the city? When does proliferation of communal dwellings come into play? How can the city claim they're not burdened when Uplink rarely gets addressed? Not boarded up Smokers Corner? Not the house that was spared? Feet from the house that burned next to it on 20th and Sumner? At the planning meeting, why was the no Oxford vandalism blamed on Near South preservationists by the Oxford lawyer and not a possible disgruntled former resident, as there are six other Oxford houses in the neighborhood, half of the city's total? And then in Oxford House Inc. versus City of Wilmington, Oxford's attorney avoided questions and deflected citizen comments concerning their understanding of Oxford House residents' costs in light of otherwise very modest property values in the neighborhood. The only thing preventing people from benefiting from these modest selling prices is being outbid by property management companies, LLCs, and Oxford-like entities. So again, rent, like affordable housing isn't just renting. And why was the homeowner not told by Oxford what was happening with the planning hearing? Why was a lawyer who never visited the home sent to address something that is supposed to be specific?
One minute.
If you're allowing more density, which is great for the environment, what are you going to do about the litter, the abundant litter in Near South? And then when will the city step in to further prioritize owner-occupied as affordable housing? What was the point of those tax credits and bright designations on Goodyear Boulevard if they haven't rendered any real results? And then does 1923B Street have commercial liability insurance or homeowner's insurance? That would answer the commercialism issue. And then again, why are they so resistant to just being called a group home, as that would seem like a very simple solution to all of this? That's really all I got.
Thank you very much. Any questions for our testifier? All right. Thank you again.
Thank you, Shelley. Yes, my name is Shelley Stahl, and I live at 1954 A Street, and I've been a resident in the Near South since 1989. And I really believe that the real issue here is density. It's not about discriminating against disabled people. I support group homes of people coping with disability, substance abuse disorder, but I do not support Oxford House Incorporated repeatedly flaunting zoning laws protecting our two neighborhoods from density in terms of population, parking, traffic, and noise. I want to make just three points here if I can. First, Oxford House operates as a group home. Lincoln's ordinance defines a group home as three to 15 people, quote, "receiving therapy or counseling, but not nursing care," end of quote. Oxford House asserts that it's not a group home because therapy or counseling is not provided on the premises and is not mandatory. But the truth is, Oxford House residents have recently completed substance abuse treatment and attend AA or NA or some other form of support and therapy in order to maintain sobriety. Residents do receive counseling and therapy even if it's not provided by Oxford House, and that's what the group home statute requires, and that's what I think Oxford House is. I think they operate as a group home. Oxford House characterizes their model as a family, but the most important aspects of Oxford House suggest a group home rather than what most people think of as a family. For example, residents must all be adults. They must all be of one gender that live in the house. They must maintain sobriety upon threat of eviction. Residents share some expenses, but they do buy and cook their own food. Residents stay an average of 7.1 months in Nebraska and 9.1 months nationally. And no matter what you want to say about family, it is a transitory population. The owner of the property does not live on the premises and sometimes does not even live in Lincoln. Oxford likes to keep the number of residents at 12 to 14 people for reasons that seem less about a therapeutic environment and more about profit to the owner. The second point, local jurisdictions can legally impose a spacing requirement on the location of group homes for persons with disabilities. There's a 2016 joint statement by HUD and the DOJ that states that city governments are permitted to consider the spacing between group homes of people with disabilities. The city attorneys also cites this statement, and I'd urge you to read it. I'm just going to quote a little bit of it briefly. "In situations where a group home seeks a reasonable accommodation to exceed the number of unrelated persons who are permitted by local ordinance to reside together, the Fair Housing Act does not prevent state nor local governments from considering concerns about the over-concentration of group homes that are located in close proximity to each other. Sometimes, compliance with the integration mandate of the ADA and Olmstead requires government agencies responsible for licensing or providing housing for persons with disabilities to consider the location of other group homes when determining what housing will best meet the needs of the persons being served." Our group ordinance, our group home ordinance, allows 13 to 15 people to reside in a single-family residence with one-half-mile spacing between group homes. Under this ordinance, Oxford House Lioncrest could have 14 people living in the home, but they would be out of compliance with the group home statute because they're too close to 19th and A. And in fact, if you look at the situation, we now have, the Near South has six Oxford houses, and there are 14, out of the 14 that are located in Lincoln. In addition to that, we have six other group homes in the Near South. I mean, I've lived there a long time. I love the mix of people and the diversity and the different kinds of housing that you have there, but it's becoming inundated with group homes. And I think perhaps it would be reasonable to grant an accommodation to an Oxford House, both as to the number of occupants and the spacing between homes, but at some point, to allow six Oxford houses
One minute.
To avoid both of those elements, it becomes a fundamental alteration of the zoning scheme. And that's what defeats this reasonable accommodation request. This is what's happened in the Near South. It's altered. It's altered our neighborhood. We're asking the city for help. We want people with substance abuse problems who are recovered. We want them to have access to affordable housing. We want group homes in our neighborhood, but we need some regulation. Right now, what we have is the Wild West. There is no zoning laws that are being enforced at all, and we're asking for the city's help. And I, along with my neighbor Kathy Wilken, would urge you to consider Carmen Maurer's letter. She set out a specific request to delay a decision so that we can work together to find a solution to this problem.
Thank you, Ms. Stahl. Are there questions for Shelley Stahl? All right, that's okay. I think we're good. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Greg. Yes.
Excuse me, good afternoon. My name is Greg Newport. I live at 1954 A Street. And I just want to address, take the discussion a little bit further on the zoning, the impact of zoning for what's happening to the Near South as well as to other inner-city neighborhoods. As you're all aware, the Near South is densely populated neighborhood that has become populated by many different types of housing. Apartment buildings were allowed to slip into smaller lots, replacing many properties along with conversions of many older homes and into apartment dwellings. Over the years, this has produced many infrastructural problems for the neighborhood, such as overcrowded parking on our streets as well as other infrastructure needs, such as water and sewer. Along with the absentee landlord effect, there was and still is today a lack of upkeep on many properties in the neighborhood. But this is changing. What you should also be aware of is that in the last decade, many homes have been reconverted to single-family residences. Upkeep in homes is on the rise, and infrastructure is improving due to the stabilization of many areas within the neighborhood. We still have overcrowded parking on our narrow streets. We feel that the revitalization of the neighborhood was assured after downzoning efforts both by the Near South Neighborhood Organization and the city. However, we once again need the support of city government to maintain the positive direction the neighborhood has been in. Maintaining a plan of stable development is paramount to whether we go forward or backward in that vision. The approval of this zoning action will work against the progress that has been made over the last period of neighborhood revitalization. The continued aggressive placement of group homes, such as Oxford House and Michael's House, increases the neighborhood's density allowed in areas designated as R1 and R2. This is a fundamental change to the zoning of those areas in the Near South where it applies. This approval has also the potential to adversely affect every other older neighborhood in the city's core. What is happening in the Near South is depicted in the maps that I've handed out, and I give those maps in other correspondence to you. I've updated it a little bit to show the additional Michael's House that is in the green on the plan that you're looking at. And if you refer to the second map, it shows the impact of the overlay when you apply group home distance requirements to the group homes. And as has been stated before, Oxford House is a group home even by their own admission. So they should also be included in that distance requirement between group homes. As you can see, by overlaying all the homes with the half-a-mile radius that is required for group homes, there really isn't a buildable lot or convertible lot left in the Near South by that standard. And finally, I just want to add, it's already been said, this is not anything against the residents that take up in these facilities, that are helped by these facilities, and their lives are improved. This is about density and the fact that this is really a fundamental zoning change that is being thrust upon the neighborhood, as we've all already said many times. Anyway, so that's about all I had to say. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you. Councilman Bowers.
I have a question. This has just been a question that's been on my mind, but since I'm looking at this map, it just kind of popped up. I don't believe that the city keeps data of how many family members are in a specific house. And if the concern is density, do you, can you help me understand the difference between, like, a group that might have more than three unrelated people living in it versus a family that might have a big family size?
Well, I think the key is there, when you really define family as a group of people that are living together as a common group that is governed by a parent in many cases, or less, some head of household that is overseeing what activities are taking place in the house, how the house is maintained, just general family living. Now, as far as the density goes, yeah, if you had a family of 14, the density issue would not necessarily be any different of a problem. But in most cases, I doubt if you'd see that many people living in one of these, and these larger homes were meant for large families, I guess originally, some of them were. But there's other houses in the neighborhood other than 1923B Street that have, you know, eight and nine people living in them, in the Oxford Houses that we know about. And these are three-bedroom homes, and, you know, a family would probably not stay in a situation like that, you know, a traditional family, I'll say, that would not stay in a situation if they were sleeping on top of each other like they are in some of these places, as it appears. I don't know if that helps, if it answers anything, answered your question or not.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Other questions? Saying none, thank you, Mr. Newport, very much. Yes, next testifier, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vish Reddy. I live at 1944 B Street. I am the president of the Near South Neighborhood Association, but I want to make it very clear that we're not here representing the association. So the association was formed really as a do-gooder and as a source of good in the neighborhood. It's come to my attention and the perception in general, we've been demonized as if we're against group homes and things like that. So we're not representing the association, per se. We're just representing ourselves and presenting our cases. As other people have mentioned, one of the downsides of going towards the end is everyone, especially when you go after a smart group, they take all the good points, and it's a tough act to follow, right? So I don't have much to add, except we're not against the, you know, the residents of the Oxford House. And I did my best keeping track of names because I want to address some of those concerns, but some names I couldn't keep track of, so I apologize. But Mr. Sexton mentioned, you know, that it's kind of a fraternity kind of atmosphere, which is great. I think that's helpful. There has to be obviously some structure associated with that, where you have people that have experience, that are teaching ones that have lesser experience, so on and so forth, so hopefully they stick to that. And I also want to say, unfortunately, you know, we're made to pick sides here. I'm probably going to, I'm going to lose some friends here, unfortunately, by the end of the day, because a lot of my kids have played with some of the kids of people that testified for, and I'm sure, you know, they're going to be like, oh, we're on opposite sides now. This cannot happen, right? And this is, unfortunately, this is how passionate and important this issue is. If it wasn't that important, you just, you wouldn't have anyone coming here, taking time out of their day, spending hours putting maps together, researching things that we're not experts on, right? And so this is an important issue. Chelsea talked about affordable housing when she came and talked about for this. Valerie talked about how the Planning Commission voted for it. Once again, there's a lot of strong-arming going on there, but the affordable housing issue is really, it's not just for renters. We have plenty of rentals in the neighborhood. I think they mentioned 80 to 83%. We have some family owners or, you know, property owners in single-family homes as well. And unfortunately, it was made to sound like it's a privilege to own a home, right? I work two jobs. My wife works. We're raising three kids. I'm telling you, it's not easy, right? And if we were privileged, I wouldn't be working two jobs, my wife wouldn't be working, we own a home, so on and so forth. So it's hard work. We work hard for the life that we're creating, and so does everybody, right? We all have our own personal journeys that we go through. I'm not knocking anybody, I'm not trying to build anybody up either. So it's not about, you know, the neighborhood being single-family or homeowners coming against and talking about, you know... So it's not about, you know, the neighborhood being single-family or homeowners coming against and talking about, you know, not having. This is really, truly a zoning issue. The one thing about the college kids living in that house, we did complain. We did look into it. It was owned by one of the parents of one of the kids that was living there. And so technically, it was one owner. They didn't have any lease agreements. This was all handshake agreements with his or her buddies in college, and they were all living there. There was no evidence we could collect. And so every time there was a party or disturbance, we did call the police, as Amanda mentioned. There were quite a few parties. We did grow tired of it. And we followed the legal process, right? And so I'm pretty sure that we are of the same caliber. There's no one that is part of the Near South Association, or anyone on that block that I know, is gonna go deface a historic home. We're here trying to preserve them. So yeah, it's an unfortunate thing that happened, but I guarantee you, it's nobody I know. So I just wanted to close some of those loops. You know, unfortunately, you know, the Near South Neighborhood Association is majority made up of family or single-family homeowners. But we've raised money through the tour of homes. And the tour of homes, where people volunteer their historic homes for people to walk through, complete strangers to walk through. We've raised forty grand in the past for various parks. And we've raised twenty grand for Peach Park, which also has high rentals around the park area. To renovate that park, we're collaborating with Parks and Rec, trying to bridge the gap and put that money together. So once again, neighborhood association, really just a force for good, so we don't want to demonize it at all. Here, just representing once again, we need to follow zoning laws. Forget the lady's name. She got very emotional when she was here talking about it. And she mentioned that this is not a Near South issue. She wants one. Every neighborhood wants to see Oxford Homes all over the city, which is great, right? But we can't afford to have Oxford Homes all over the city and just Oxford Homes. It doesn't balance out community, doesn't balance out neighborhoods. We've got to have a mix of everything. So there has to be laws that we follow. I believe Lincoln is a very welcoming city, but we do have to follow laws. We can't just welcome without any kind of structure or ordinances in place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions or discussion? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'm Anne Watt. I live at fourteen forty-eight B Streets. That's the pink house on the corner of Fifteenth and, well, Goodhue and B. I wasn't going to speak today, so I have no notes, and I, probably my voice will shake. But my husband and I moved here in nineteen ninety-two. So we've lived here for thirty years in this neighborhood. My mother lived in the neighborhood and noticed the first Plymouth preschool playground when she was there. And so our daughter went there when she was four, and I started working there. I've been in early childhood education for over twenty years. My husband is a teacher, just retired from Southwest High School. But our daughters have, we raised two daughters. They went to school at McPhee, Prescott Park, and Lincoln High. We love our neighborhood. My husband and I picked out the lamp posts from a catalog, so the lamp posts that go up and down Goodhue. We are proud to have chosen. I was just, the reason I wanted to speak today is sort of as a character reference for those people that I know, who I have been on PTAs with over the years. We've done bike rodeos. We've raised money for parks. Our kids have played together and grown up together. And we all live in this neighborhood because it is inclusive. This is the neighborhood that we live in. My husband and I met when we were living overseas. I've lived in New York City, a lot of big cities. And I love being able to walk downtown, walk to the stadium to watch a football game. I love to, we take public transportation every now and then. My kids rode bikes. You know, this has been our neighborhood for many, many years. And I know no one, I will, as Vish said, I don't know anybody who has talked about not wanting these people in the neighborhood, you know. I don't know anyone who would not welcome the idea of an inclusive situation for people who are recovering. We have, I've lived next door and across the street from people who were in prison, who have sex offenders, who came and introduced themselves, introduced himself to us when we had little girls, just because he wanted us to know. We love the mix of the neighborhood. And there is no one that I have known over the years who does not live here for that reason. So I guess I just wanted to be a little bit of a character reference for those people, those of us who live here, and just want the best for our neighborhood. I don't think it's about the concept of the Oxford House. I think it's the number of Oxford Houses that we have in our neighborhood, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right. Thanks again. Please go ahead.
I'm Tessa Dominguez. I live at twelve twenty-four North Twenty-Sixth Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. I work for the Mental Health Association and am one of the coordinators for a transitional living home, the HANU Home. We do have a twenty-bed transitional home. We serve over a thousand people a year and are considered a transitional living. As I come up here today, I want to be really clear that I'm not here in opposition of Oxford or any other transitional living home. I think that it was stated very well and several times that there is a need. I also am a previously incarcerated individual and a recovering addict. I fully believe in the model and the things that they talked about and the benefits that come from supporting each other. And, yeah, like, there were a lot of things that they said that I wasn't aware of that they did that I really enjoyed hearing. I loved that they are required to volunteer if they're not working. I come up here because of a concern for safety. So in our homes, we have one individual per bedroom, and they are bedrooms. Prior to having a twenty-bed transitional living home, we had a six-bedroom, or no, five-bedroom home that also operated as a transitional living home. There are requirements that are required of us as having a transitional living home that provide for the safety of the guest of our home. Those things would be like fire safety doors, egress windows in basements, drop-down ladders in attics, those types of things. And so speaking from a person that is also in recovery and coming from the same type of background, there are often times in our life where, like, we do just, we are, find ourselves in this survival mode of wanting to find a place to live and a place that is supportive of our recovery, surrounded by people that are supportive of our recovery. And the safety of ourselves oftentimes gets put on that back burner, and we're not thinking about the things like the egress windows and the fire safety doors. And so I think that it's important that those things be pointed out, that we do talk about them, that we look at those things. And this is the reason that we do operate as a transitional living home. I think that, you know, there were some things stated today about like the amount of rent that they collect. I don't know how much of that goes to the homeowner, for sure, right? And how much of that goes into Oxford, but we do also operate as a nonprofit. And I know that operating as a nonprofit, those funds do have to go back into our organization in one way or another. I would hope that at seven thousand dollars a month for rent, there would be funds in there for fire safety doors. They're not that expensive. And some of these other precautions that could be put in place that would make sure that people are safe, as well as affordable housing. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Tess. Any questions? Councilman Bowers.
So you said at the Mental Health Association that you have transitional housing, which has one person per bedroom, right? Can you talk a little bit about like the level of care that your transitional housing provides? Like, is it mandated, or is it, can you just talk a little bit about the level of care that is provided there?
Yeah, so our houses are peer-supported. So everybody that is employed by us is trained in intentional peer support. Our houses are staffed, two to three staff on at a time for the upwards of, like, we max out at twenty individuals living in our home. The big part of that is, like, we are there to provide support, but also it is for safety. We need to know who's coming and going from the home. So if there was a fire in the house and a fire marshal came to the door, we would know who's in the home and who is not at the time that those things happen. Let's see, like, what specifically are you?
Like, are people mandated to go to your facility, or is it self-referred, or?
No. They are oftentimes, so people, they're people that are previously incarcerated, and they, like, that's their choice. Nobody is mandated. Everything that we do in peer support is voluntary. So they choose to put in an application for HANU, and then it goes through the reentry team and comes to us.
Do you currently have a waitlist?
Yes.
How long is your waitlist?
I couldn't even tell you.
Pretty long, then?
Yeah, and, you know, like, we decided that we weren't going to do a waitlist, per se. We take what we can every month, right? I mean, there is a need, you know, and I heard the lawyer for Oxford talk about that earlier, that they accommodate the need. We could very easily put bunk beds in all twenty of our rooms and house forty people. But I don't think that that would be in the best interest of the recovery of the individuals that live there, nor would it be the safest thing for us to do for everybody involved.
Can you explain that just a little deeper about why having bunk beds would reduce outcomes? If you decided to go from twenty to forty? Because I think, like, in my mind, if there's a huge waitlist and a huge need, wouldn't fitting two people in a room instead of one help provide more services to more people?
I think that that's a two-sided coin. I think on one side of it, absolutely, there is a need, and it would provide that. I think on the other side of that, you take away from some of the individualism that we're able to provide and the support that we give, because then you're overwhelmed with so many people. Like I said, we do staff our houses with peer support, and so that's a part of it. We also offer some programming there. We do have AA meetings there. We offer RAP Wellness Recovery Action Planning, RentWise, trauma groups, those types of things. And I think that when we get too large, then we take away from some of that individualism that we're able to provide.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next testifier, please.
I'm Jason Whitmer. I've been about other subjects in several areas. My address, twelve twenty-four North Twenty-Sixth Street, Lincoln resident. I'm coming personally. Personally, I would like to say, again, we're not against the Oxford House. It's the pattern that's gonna be set. As we already, I've already heard the House mentioned, and you guys are gonna make laws, you're gonna make policies, you're gonna make rules, and these patterns are gonna happen. A lot of us, so let me say myself personally, I probably would be considered more dangerous than anybody in this room if I lived in our neighborhood. I've been incarcerated. I've been a young gang member. Easily researchable, because I'm active out here in the community now, because that's my, that's how I give back. And people shouldn't be able to choose their neighbors, because that's how segregation works. So this is nothing against the people in the neighborhood, but people shouldn't be able to choose their neighbors, because that starts that dynamic of judgments. However, when a resident is operated by an organization or an individual who acts as an organization, there should be regulations. And the first and foremost should be safety and security. Because no matter what benefit I get out of it, what benefit my friends get out of it, somewhere down the road, I'm setting the pattern for somebody to get hurt. The one lady spoke about using the single-family dynamic for an attic space, so that somebody can burn to death up in there. Do they have a ladder up there? Do they have, you know, is that a thing? These are like little dynamics that organizations are responsible for, that individuals who act as organizations are responsible for. And there's no way that, I'm gonna speak about the Oxford House. There's no way that the Oxford House, the lawyer, can come up here and say they don't benefit when they're nationwide. They can pay for every element. So I work for the Mental Health Association as well. I coordinate the Kia House. The Kia House is on the south side. It's a respite house. We went through this process with the Kia House, with the HANU House. But some key things that should happen is the occupancy permits, fire inspection, building codes, to look at the house, to make sure it's safe, to make sure that the people who are benefiting from this are not gonna suffer the consequences of this, right? Would you all agree with that? I would think so. So I'm not gonna ask you to respond, but, so with that dynamic, we provide safety, security. Also, with the dynamic, we, as Tessa spoke about, we regulate our own, as an organization, need to build our funds with what's best for the individuals, and that's one, is not stacking people up. That's a facility-type manner. And when I'm in a desperate mode, I'm gonna go in a place that's stacked up, and I might get some benefit out of it. And as the crowd here has spoken, they have all gained benefit out of it. But we are here to stop patterns, and we know what laws will do if they're established, and then the next person uses it. And that's what's happening here, is this pattern of being able to come as an organization or an individual, acting as an organization and say, we're a single-family residence, so we can operate like a single family, where we can put fifteen, twenty people in. But it is much different. And I'm, you know, you asked a question, it is much different than a family, because I might not be able to afford that, but I'm gonna put all my family in here. I can't afford to put the, through the building codes. Maybe I don't even know the building codes. But we're gonna put all our family here, because we're a single family. We're not an organization. We're not an individual profiting as an organization. Oxford is. So are we. The Mental Health Association. So are all these organizations. So when you think about these accommodations, it's a loophole. Accommodations for ADA, safety and security, I believe, is in there. Otherwise, we wouldn't have accommodations. We provide accommodations for everybody. And the first and foremost is safety and security, and not to establish a pattern for another organization to come in and profit off of this need for housing, both from coming out of incarceration, from needing a community to grow with.
One minute.
And et cetera, by packing people in houses. I'm not here to speak on how many houses are where or whatnot. I'm just thinking of this pattern of, that's developing, and we're seeing it coming out, where they got, they're not only packing people in houses, now we're starting to see where they're sneaking people in houses and then clearing space before you come in to inspect it. So at minimum, what you should do is, some of them that I mentioned, you know, also spacing. Spacing should be a thing. Four, two bunk beds in a room? I've heard about this. I'm not applying this to the Oxford House, but heard about two bunk beds in a room, a family house? These are not children living in, you know, with their little brothers and sisters in these spots. These are grown adults with our issues and our problems that we need to work with, and we're trying to get through it with everybody else's issue. That sounds like prison. People say prison benefits them. I promise you, if prison would pay the funds to invest in a person like they pay the funds to keep people, you would not only benefit, you would grow way more successful than you ever came from an environment like that. And that's what this is creating out here now. And so we have groups, and I believe maybe some of you are, that are establishing what these patterns should look like when people are, organizations or individual acting organizations are coming in and establishing these homes. I don't want it to go overreaching, but at minimum, this shouldn't happen.
Thank you very much, Jason. Any questions from the council for him? Thank you.
My name is Mark Brohman. That's B-R-O-H-M-A-N. I live at twenty-six thirty-seven Washington Street. I've been a resident of the Near South for thirty-one years. We took a home thirty-one years ago. It was a duplex. We turned it back to single-family. I started the downzoning for our block. I believe it was the first downzoning in the city. The city council, the planning department recommended it be denied. The city council disagreed. They thought, what's wrong with this? The city council thought that downzoning was a good idea for the Near South. We were trying to get families back in there. So our entire block is single-family owner-occupied, just as all but one or two of the houses on B Street. They keep saying eighty to ninety percent of the Near South is rental. It is on average, but those individual blocks, you have to look at those individual blocks. Our block is a hundred percent until Michael's House bought a house two months ago in our neighborhood. Same thing on B Street. There's a duplex there, and there's an apartment complex. Otherwise, it's single-family. So it's not the same as the rest of the Near South. They're asking for reasonable accommodations, and I applaud those that have come and testified today and told us about their problems and what they've got through, and that's great. There's a huge demand out there. I agree with that. But the answer is not stacking fourteen people in a house. If we do grant reasonable accommodations, I think that we could put reasonable conditions on those permits. One of them would be no more than two individuals per conforming bedroom. The key there is conforming. I think one person- I think one person, like the gentleman just said, per bedroom is, is more realistic. People need some space when they come out of prison, otherwise it's just like they're going back into prison, they've got a bunk mate. They need to have two fire escapes per floor. Maybe the kitchen needs fire suppression. If you've got fourteen people cooking a little kitchen, what about fires in that kitchen? Things like that. And then spacing in the neighborhood, I think that's really important. How many can you put into one neighborhood? We've got five of them, or four of them within five blocks of each other right now on the B Street area. These unregulated facilities have an administrative burden to the city. That alone could be a reason to deny it or to delay this. This will be a burden to the city as we see more and more of these come along. This house has three or four bedrooms, depending upon who you listen to. Uh, can you imagine five people per bathroom in the morning at seven o'clock trying to get ready to go to work? Because these folks are trying to get back into the workforce. Can you imagine those people trying to crowd into those bathrooms? You know, I grew up in a farmhouse, there were three boys. We had a tough time with one bathroom getting ready in the morning. So I can't imagine that many grown men trying to get ready. Then the septic system, these older neighborhoods weren't built for this many people. Now someone said, "Well, we did, we did, uh, some work on the septic system in the house." So sure, they put in new pipes in the house, but it's where it goes into that main trunk. On our block of Washington, those pipes are over a hundred years old. In the last couple of months, we've had several problems, and you can check with the city's septic folks, they've had problems with that backing up, there's just more use than ever. Washers and dryers, people running water in their sink, taking longer showers. So you've got fourteen people here flushing toilets, taking showers, cooking. So I, I think that's something that needs to be looked at. I own two houses with five bedrooms and four full bathrooms between the two of them. And I charge thirty, I charge less than, uh, two thousand dollars a month rent. This house has five legal bedrooms and three full bathrooms, and the landlord is charging thirty-one hundred dollars a month. And we heard that people are paying five hundred dollars a month, so that's seven thousand dollars in income that's coming in. Where's that other four thousand dollars going? Well, I think thirty-one hundred dollars a month is unrealistic for the landlord to charge for this property. If they're really trying to help people out, why isn't that more in line with rental properties? Why isn't it about twenty-five hundred, twenty-six hundred? Why is it thirty-one hundred? But where's that extra money going to? Like someone mentioned earlier, it should be going back into safety for these folks. I'm not against the Oxford houses and their model, I'm against jamming fourteen people into a house. Now someone said, "Well, I went in, looked around, it, it looked nice." Well, they're using sunrooms and they're using rooms like that, they were never meant to be bedrooms. But these folks are using them for that. There are thirteen other Oxford houses in Lincoln, and they've been around longer than this one. And someone brought up earlier, you know, the attorney mentioned that, you know, it's like liquor licenses. And the person brought up the, the example that if this was a liquor license, then they shouldn't be able to go out and sell liquor before they get the license. You've got thirteen Oxford houses that have been operating out there, flaunting the law, saying, "We don't care about the law, we think we're above the law." And they've been operating out there before this house came in and asked for permission. Why did this house come in and ask for permission? Because it's in an established neighborhood with a lot of single families, and they complained about it. Because they saw problems coming with that many new neighbors coming. And these other places where these Oxford houses, you go look at those neighborhoods, a lot of them are heavy, density rentals. So to them, the neighbors didn't say anything, they didn't care. In these single-family dwelling neighborhoods, people know their neighbors. People were saying, on average, these people are here seven months. A lot of these people are here for a couple of months. Maybe one or two are here for a couple of years, so that skews it. You don't get to know your neighbors in that time. And I love that the Oxford House on B Street went out and planted flowers. I drove around the other thirteen houses in town, and I can tell you, there's not flowers planted around those. There's a lot of shrubs growing, they're overgrown, the yards are mowed, yes. But the houses aren't being kept up. And so I think that's what we're gonna start seeing in these neighborhoods. And I think it's your duty to figure out a way to accommodate people, but not overcrowd folks. See if I had anything else, uh, to mention. I, I think there'll be a lot of requests coming. You know, these LLCs have bought a lot of houses in town, and I think this is just the beginning of the, of, of this. I did visit the, the Kena House with four residents and four bedrooms just yesterday, and I think that was a very well-organized, and I think that's a model to look at. That was on South Fourteenth, and the gentleman that was up here, he's there, and I think that's a model to look to, not fourteen people. But I appreciate your time. And, uh, that, that petition I signed, that I brought the other day and handed out, that was not from the, the Near South neighborhood. That was from our block. Those thirteen signatures were from one single block telling the city, "We're concerned about this." So I just wanted to clear that for the record. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Excuse me, any questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much.
Hi. My name's Brian Mitchell Tree, and I live at thirteen twenty South Nineteenth. And basically, that's, uh, ten feet from the Oxford House at nineteen hundred A and sixty feet from the Oxford House at nineteen twenty-three B. So basically, I'm in the middle of thirty unsupervised alcoholics and addicts. And anyways, I also own ten other buildings in the Near South neighborhood. Six of those are permitted as apartments. So every year, buildings in safety comes out and inspects them for, uh, fire codes, uh, safety infringements, aesthetics. And, uh, you know, if I, if I don't meet their standards, I'm fined or incarcerated. I know of two landlords put in jail, uh, Lee Simmons and, uh, Roger Dewar, that were put in jail for not following those codes. So I can tell you now that those Oxford houses are breaking far more rules than those two landlords I just mentioned. So, you know, it's, it's just not fair to them, and it's not fair to me. I, I, I guess some of my bigger complaints are the, the traffic and the noise. Uh, my, my street is pretty much like a Nebraska football game day on a Saturday in front of my house every day. So, and, and not to mention the noise. I guess, I, I'd just like to say that in society, there's a balance. And these Oxford houses upset that balance without some oversight, some regulation. And it's basically just due to greedy landlords, that's, that's what it's all about. Because me as a landlord, I'm, I'm following the rules. So it's, it's, it's just not fair to people like me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. Are there any more testifiers in support of this issue that would like to testify? Any more supporters that would like to testify? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Moore, would you like to close on your item?
We have one person who wanted to talk.
If, if people have testified once, I'm sorry. That's just, we have, I'm, yep, one per person, thank you.
Testing, yeah, okay. Scott Moore, seventeen hundred Farnham Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one zero two. Just like to respond to some of the, the comments that, uh, came across. First of all, uh, the house was inspected, and at the, uh, planning commission meeting, the question came up whether Oxford House Lioncrest was meeting all life safety codes. It is, it is in compliance with every life safety code, uh, imposed on it, uh, according to the city. I did say, I did use the word group home, I thought I clarified it right after, but I just want to make very clear for the record that this Oxford House does not fit the definition of group home as the city defines it. They live as a group, but it's self-run democratically, they don't... Oh, is it, are you getting feedback or?
Nope, nope.
Okay. It does not meet the definition of group home. So to the extent I misspoke, I apologize, I just want to make that very clear for the record. From, from what I understand, um, there was a great concern that, um, of maintaining the single-family character of the housing in this neighborhood, which Oxford House Lioncrest is doing and will do, because it's part of their, uh, uh, program that they, they live as one family, they live together, they will not break it up, they won't chop it up. This, a, a, and as far as maintenance goes, I think you heard the testimony. I'm, I'm quite frankly, a little bit speechless and humbled and certainly privileged after I hear the testimony and support from former Oxford House residents. But you did hear that they are maintaining the property at, at a high level. They are keeping the single-family nature. This is not operated as an apartment complex chopped, chopped up. I think that... That's all I have, I don't want to waste the, the council's time. I'd rather have you ask, ask any questions that I can answer, please.
Thank you very much. Questions from the council? I know Councilman Bowers.
Are you, this is gonna be kind of a, a specific question.
Sure.
Um, are you familiar with the City of Wilmington case with Oxford Houses? Can you explain how that, or can you explain that in relation to Lincoln?
Yeah, so, um...
And can you explain what the case was about so that way those in the audience?
Sure, well, uh, it, it's impossible for me to get into all the details of that case. But, but I, I will say that, um, the City of Wilmington was an entirely different ordinance, um, also governed by a different circuit court, so the laws here are a little bit different, believe it or not, even the federal laws are different. But to the extent they were trying to equate that with over-concentration issues, uh, I, I will certainly address that. Is, my understanding is from, from what I understand, well, even the testimony today, that eighty-five percent of... First of all, I think the definition of Near South has changed as we heard different testimony. Some people said it was small, some people said it was a block, some, some people said it was bigger. But as I understand, the Near South definition, eighty-five percent of the Near South is rental property, much of which is multifamily apartments or converted to multifamily apartments. I'm not aware of any study that's been done with regard to Ox, this Oxford House leading to over-concentration of the neighborhood, looking at it with regard to the other for-profit commercial apartment complexes out there with regard to that. This case is distinguishable from the Oxford House from that standpoint. I think most likely, be, most importantly, because of the neighborhood and the concentration of this neighborhood and where this neighborhood is, and the, and the number of multifamily housing uses and the number of rental housing uses that were consistent with this neighborhood.
And one of the questions that came up is, um, I got it on, is it okay? Um, is providing like, uh, a, a number that's reasonable.
Uh huh.
Can you talk about why the number that you're proposing is reasonable as opposed to a different number?
Sure, so, uh, Oxford House, again, um, and I don't want to get into the eighteen, because we're not talking about eighteen, we're not going to eighteen, fourteen is the cap here. Based upon the size of the house, the location of the house, and what Oxford House has seen as twelve to fourteen people being the optimal operation uh, within all of the reason, all of the land use codes and those kind of things, and compromising on that, twelve to fourteen i- is, is the optimal size of an, of an Oxford House. And with the demand here and the size of the house, uh, fourteen is a reasonable number to, 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 to land at here. Now, it won't always be fourteen. There'll be transition. You know, we talked about, you know, I don't think it's relevant at all how much the rent is, but the rent is thirty-one hundred a month. And one of the, one of the things, when, when they collect, uh, the monthly income from the residents, one thing they need to do is have reserves and things, because if it goes down below, the rent still do. So it could go down to eight. Not unusual for that to happen. And if you only charge the, the five hundred dollars or, or the, the amount of the thirty-one hundred dollars, they couldn't pay the rent that month, and they certainly couldn't pay five days early. So, um, that fluctuates. It's not always gonna be operating at fourteen, but they find houses that allow for twelve to fourteen beds being the optimal size where, where Oxford House has found success.
The City of Wilmington case, as you mentioned, was in a different, uh, district.
In North Carolina, yes.
Yeah, federal court. Uh, are there any, um, court cases within this district that you're aware of or a nearby district that address this issue?
The spacing issue? There are several cases out there that address the spacing issue. I can't think of anybody, any, any offhand. I don't, I don't know if the Eighth Circuit has addressed that or not. And I'm familiar with all the Eighth Circuit cases. Uh, you know, concentration is brought up in every single case. So in my, uh, case, New Hope case in Omaha, in my developmental services case of Nebraska down here in Lincoln, concentration was brought up again and soundly rejected by the court because it is on a case-by-case basis to determine what the character of the neighborhood is.
Have there been any, last question, I promise, thank you, Councilwoman. There's been a lot of talk about like safety and making sure that there is, um, facility-type of safety measures in place like egress windows. And I'm not entirely sure what all is on, uh, the B, on the B Street location, but you said that's passed a, a thing or a, a check. Have there been any circumstances that you're aware of? Because I haven't looked this up. Are there been any circumstances that you're aware of where, um, there's been like, uh, a health issue or a fire issue that's resulted in like loss of life or limb or major property in any of the Oxford Houses?
Uh, I can't answer that question, not that I'm aware of, but I don't want to say unequivocally no, because I don't know, I mean, there's thousands of chapters and, and I, I don't know if, you know, I'm sure if you have thousands of houses internationally, there's been a fire at a house.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm not aware of any loss of life. I'm pretty confident in that, there's been no loss of life like that. But again, I think the important thing here is the city's professionals from, that inspect for life safety, inspected the home and Oxford House is in compliance with all the life safety codes. And they wouldn't operate if they weren't. Or if, if, you know, again, one of the issues is, is that, and again, this sometimes e- escapes folks because if you're not in it and understand it, and I don't even understand it like the, the, like the residents do, that, you know, there, there have been cities that try to impose, uh, you know, just sign up for a business license. We'll just, we'll look the other way, just sign up for a business license, right? You know, pretend like you're commercial, right? Oxford House doesn't even do that, because one of the fundamental principles of the Oxford House recovery model is you don't lie. You don't make, you don't go under false pretenses. And those things may seem dumb and simple to some people, but if you talk to the, the residents that are here, that's one of the fundamental things. They are not a commercial operation. So when we talk about putting a sprinkler system in and all these commercial things that you don't require of, of other similar housing, um, that, that concerns me. Because as I understand it, the Oxford House meets every requirement that is applicable to that house under the life safety code. And that's what I can say unequivocally. Everything else, I think, is hypothetical.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council?
Thank you so much.
Seeing none, thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, when you're ready, let's move on.
Hello, now the item five B, accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for July fifteenth through July thirty-first of twenty twenty-two.
Is there anyone here that would like to testify on this item? Please come forward, thank you.
Hello. Uh, thank you, City Council, for giving me this time. Um, in April of this year, um, a tree on the city's property in front of my home on the easement, um, a branch fell off and damaged the roof of my property. Um, I submitted a claim to the city attorney's office with, um, all the required information, and they returned a letter that they would, um, recommend that the city not pay for it because they didn't... The city attorney thinks that, uh, they are not legally responsible for the tree. I disagree with that. Um, I was really honestly shocked when I received the letter back that they were denying it. I apologize, my name's Ronald Bonzi, uh, forty-four thirty-four Calvert Street. I was really shocked that the city had denied it. Um, it seemed like just, you know, on its face value, it was a very simple claim. Um, monetary loss was approximately three hundred and seventy-five dollars, so not a huge amount. Um, I was surprised that the city would, you know, deny the claim when, like I said, on face value, it was very simple and straightforward and kind of, you know, put me in a legal opposition to the city that I live in and that I contribute to. I've lived in the home for, this would be four years. Um, I've had to make a complaint at least once every year on that specific tree, um, falling limbs on my home, on my car, which, you know, I was responsible for at that time. And, um, never have raised a claim with the city before. You know, so I've worried about this tree the whole time I've lived there. I have two young children that play in the front yard, so it is a, it is a hazard, and I've tried to address it with the, um, Lincoln Parks and Rec Department. Um, I would just ask that the city council, you know, reconsider and, you know, re, you know, compensate me for the loss because of the city's tree, you know. I'm, I'm the sole provider for my family. I spend my week trying to budget, you know, whether I need three gallons of milk at home or two gallons of gas. You know, it's a very difficult time for me, and this is an unexpected expense. Granted, again, it's, you know, we're not talking about a lot of money, but in this situation for me and my family, it, it is a lot of money. Um, I've already paid to have the gutters replaced, and I would just like to be compensated for the loss.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzi, for coming forward. Does anyone on the council have questions for... Thank you, Mr. Bonzie, for coming forward. Does anyone on the council have questions for, yes, Councilwoman Washington?
Mr. Bonzie, thank you for coming forward this evening. You mentioned just a moment ago that you have filed a complaint on this specific tree before?
That's correct. At least once every year, I filed a complaint. The city has come out previously and tended to the tree. They've had to remove limbs. This particular limb, the city did come out and also remove the limb, you know, from my front yard and dispose of it, but that was really the extent, extent of it. I reached out to them, like I said, to, you know, try and resolve the matter, but I mean, it was just like, you know, but beyond the legal issue, you know, maybe you're not legally responsible, although I would disagree. You know, we're community members, you know, I, like I said, I live here, I contribute. This is maybe more like a moral issue, or, you know, maybe we're ethically responsible, you know. It used to be legal to sterilize the mentally ill, you know, legal, yes, right, probably not. So I would just like, you know, to be.
Just, just for clarification, did you contact, did you put your complaint in through Uplink? Did you call the Parks Department? I'm just trying to, so I can track.
Both, yep. I called and through Uplink as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from the council? I just, I just wanted to clarify, on the claims report, it says, I think, you filed a claim in the amount of five hundred dollars versus three seventy-five, is that the same claim that we're looking at?
Oh, that may, that may very well be.
Okay.
I'm not sure why the discrepancy.
Okay, that's fine. I would just wanted to clarify. So how this will work, does anybody want to hear from staff or are we good? Would you like to hear from, okay. Mr. Christie, could we hear from you or other staff as appropriate? Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Bonzie. I'm sure she would.
Johansson Christie, City Attorney, five-five-five South Tenth. We reviewed the claim and obviously recommended denial. It was our position that the city did not act in a negligent manner. We did not believe that the city had notice. It's my understanding from the Forestry Department that the tree is not diseased and that the reason the tree branch fell was due to strong winds. And so it wasn't something that we believe the city was, again, on notice of, that there was a problem, that the tree needed to be removed or anything like that. So.
Councilwoman Raebolt?
Mr. Christie, do you have records of Parks and Rec or the arborists coming out prior to this incident of trimming the tree or?
I believe that I do, and I can, I certainly agree that I believe that there were previous calls. And again, I know that we do not have someone from Forestry that might be able to better speak about this, but looking at the records that I have, it would appear that there was a call in April of, well, first May of this year, which is probably this claim, I think, maybe, April, January, and then April of twenty nineteen. And I, I don't know, and then I see twenty eighteen, and the next one would be two thousand and four. Two claims in two thousand and four. So twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and then January, April, and May of this year.
Okay, all right. Councilman Beck, yes?
So the, the records that I have is that it was complete. If I, I was to start with January this year, a tree is healthy, healthy tree is shedding dead limbs. There was a call. And then they, they went out, and again, healthy tree.
Did they trim the tree at that time with the, the dead limbs? Did they at least trim the dead limbs that they noticed?
So my notes do not reflect one way or another. I have, my notes from Forestry say complete, that they went out, I think got a call maybe on the twelfth, and were out there on the twenty-first. I do not know if they, I show complete, so.
I guess I, I for one would like more information on the work that the Forestry Department did in response to the calls.
I agree. And, and.
And the April call.
And the nineteen and eighteen.
Would you like to handle that in the voting, in the voting session? All right. Thank you, Mr. Christie. Appreciate it. All right. So, Mr. Bonzie, there you are. So how this will work is when we get to the voting session, it will take a council member to change your request and pull it out of the report that we will be voting on. So we'll get to the voting session next. So, thank you. Does that make sense? Okay, very good. All right, Madam Clerk.
Okay. That concludes our public hearing on section five. We will now move into our voting. Item five A is application of Oxford House lying crest for a reasonable accommodation under chapter one point two eight of the Lincoln Municipal Code to allow fourteen unrelated disabled persons to reside together as a family as the term is defined by the Lincoln zoning ordinance on property generally located at nineteen twenty-three B Street, introduced by Raebolt. So moved.
Second.
At this time, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we delay taking a decision on this agenda item for one week.
Second.
So it's been moved by Councilwoman Raebolt and seconded by Councilwoman Washington to delay action on this item by one week. Is there discussion?
Yeah, I would like to just make a very short statement. I have heard a lot today. I've heard a lot by email. I want to thank everyone for coming to testify. I know our habit and our rules usually say that we can vote on resolutions right away, but I cannot incorporate all this material and information and vote this evening. I would like one week to vote.
Any other discussion?
I also feel the same way. I am grateful for the folks that provided a tremendous amount of testimony via email and tonight and taking the time to do that, as well as the members from Oxford House that shared their courageous stories as well. But there is a lot of legal issues I think we still have to wade through and have a better understanding of. And certainly thank you, Mr. Moore, for coming down and providing as much information as you did, but I do feel a little bit overwhelmed trying to sort it out and come to a really appropriate conclusion. So I'm grateful for my council members to support this delay of one week.
Councilman Schob, did you have a? Okay, all right. Any other discussion on this motion to delay for two weeks? Is that with, I'm sorry, one week?
One week.
Thank you. Was that with continued or no more closed date with a vote? Thank you. I couldn't get to that.
Action only.
Action only, one week. All right. Saying none. Madam Clerk, please call the, the vote.
Raebolt?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beck, yes?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Now, could we please vote on the main motion? Oh, there is no main motion. It's gone. Okay, so I'm going to need a little prodding. All right. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on, please.
Item five B is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for July fifteenth through July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, introduced by Beckius.
Second.
It's been seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to have one item removed, Mr. Bonzie, Ronald Bonzie's claim removed for further consideration, one week, please. Or, oh, I'm so sorry. Is it one week or is it the next time we see?
Yes, I would ask that you, that the motion state the next time that claims comes before council, then we will notify Mr. Bonzie when it's back before the council.
Thank you for that friendly amendment and correction.
And I would second that, but I would also like to have more detailed information from Forestry on the action that they noted as complete.
Deli noted.
Okay.
All right. So, does everybody know what we're?
Motion to remove, right?
Motion to remove. It'll return.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raebolt?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Mr. Bonzie, we're returning, we're removing your item indefinitely. Yes, thank you for coming. All right, ready to move forward.
Now we can do the main motion.
Oh, I knew there'd be one. Let's please vote on the main motion. I'm just trying to entertain.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raebolt?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Thank you. We can move on, please.
Move on to section six, public hearing ordinances, second reading and related resolutions. Item six A is approving the third management agreement for Pinnacle Bank Arena between the City of Lincoln and SMG for the operation and management of Pinnacle Bank Arena and other facilities for a three-year term commencing September first, twenty-twenty-two, with the option to renew for one additional three-year term.
Good evening. Mr. Lorenz and I are going to tag-team this. Chris Connolly, City Law Department, five fifty-five South Tenth Street.
Tom Lorenz with Pinnacle Bank Arena. I live at thirteen sixty-four Prairie View Road in Eagle.
We are very pleased to bring you this agreement tonight. SMG has done an outstanding job of running Pinnacle Bank Arena over the last ten years, and we've gone through the first two management agreements, not just Pinnacle Bank Arena, but Pinewood Bowl also. And so what we are presenting tonight for your consideration is the third management agreement. I won't go into a lot of details of the changes between the first and the second one. We, this will be a three-year agreement. It's technically slightly longer than that because we're trying to sync up the times for SMG to be able to get their alcohol licenses, so it actually would go from September one of twenty-twenty-two until October thirty-one of twenty-twenty-five, and then three years after that. And then there is an option for a second three-year agreement after that. As far as the fees and compensation are concerned, the, there's a shift away from the fixed fee, which is still there, but this, this time it goes up nominally, and instead there's more of a shift towards the incentive fees. Targets are a little bit lowered. That may make it easier for SMG to reach those targets, but the percentages that would actually are attached to each of those incentives are still the same as what they were before. So the bottom line is that in addition to the fixed fee, they will have opportunities to make essentially twice as much as what they're making now in the fixed fee. If you added up all the incentives, if they had all the incentives, they would be capped at fifty percent of the fixed fee and then fifty percent of the incentive fee, so they, they can get to a hundred percent of their fixed fee. In other words, four hundred and sixty thousand would be the maximum that we would have to pay in any one year under this current new formula. The fixed fee does go up by three percent each year, which is lower than the five percent that it had been going up. And so, but this is something that was discussed and was proposed by SMG. We negotiated this for six or seven months. There are a number of changes, and I've provided you information on that. But with that, I'll let Mr. Lorenz say a few words.
Thank you. I'm honored to stand before you to be able to talk about the extension of this agreement. Lincoln is our home. We've been here for over twenty-five years, worked at Pinnacle Bank Arena, worked at Pershing Center. We obviously do things at Pinewood Bowl. ASM Global is an excellent company. They are the worldwide leader in not only venue management, but also in producing live events. And so I have a tremendous amount of support from our corporate offices. A lot of things to contemplate as you think about whether we should extend this agreement. We have an excellent and experienced staff. I've got a terrific staff that I get to work with. Our team is seasoned, industry professionals with years of experience. We've got long-term relationships with City of Lincoln officials, University of Nebraska athletic and academic officials, working relationships with multiple community organizations, including the CVB Chamber, Downtown Lincoln Association, City of Lincoln Park and Rec, Haymarket Rallyard Associations, Nebraska School Activities Association, and many other arts and civic organizations. We can provide detailed firsthand knowledge of our venues' infrastructure, and a venue like this is unique and different from maybe just a straight office building or something like that. We, lastly, we understand the balance between providing revenue-producing events at PBA and also our civic responsibility to provide and serve the community, and so we try to find that good balance in there. Again, we work closely with city officials to make appropriate adjustments on this management agreement. As Chris talked about, you know, the base management fee, especially with inflation, was growing at a pretty big jump every year. So we wanted to dial that back and make it more incentive-based, and so it's been terrific to work with Chris and the rest of the city to get to this point.
Thank you. They've been great partners, and so we're asking for your adoption of this tonight. If there's any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Councilwoman Raebolt?
Well, there's no doubt. I mean, Pinnacle Bank Arena, Pinewood Bowl, all the other venues that you have developed have really brought terrific acts and performers to our city. So I was just kind of curious about the incentive part. What, what do you have to do to earn an incentive? Is it just like book and put on more events or have bigger crowds? Or it's a combination of both? What's the quickest way to get an incentive?
So incentive is based off of two ways. There's qualitative and quantitative. The qualitative is to hit certain financial incentives, to hit certain financial numbers, and, you know, we've had up and down years. It depends on what the market is doing. It depends on COVID and things like that. And so if we hit certain financial incentives, then we get the qualitative piece, which is fifty percent, quantitative piece, excuse me. The qualitative piece is more, how does our, how do our clients react? What type of numbers do we hit as far as attendance, the number of events? What kind of ranking and ratings do we get from surveys that go back out to our patrons? So it's divided both ways. IRS rules only allow us to double that base fee, and so there's a lot of incentive and a lot of movement within that qualitative and quantitative area.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? I do, I have a, just a comment. And just to, kudos to Tom and his crew at PBA. I have the luxury of sitting through the West Haymarket JPA meeting, so I get to, excuse me, hear the numbers a lot more than my colleagues. But Tom, if you wouldn't mind, just giving a brief overview of how during the pandemic you were able to hang on and how those, how good those numbers looked despite the coronavirus, if you don't mind.
Sure. The pandemic was really an interesting time to live through, and with the city's support, we were able to keep our staff, which is a pretty lean staff, fully employed. We certainly weren't able to keep all of the part-time people employed at any sort of level we'd like to. But we still wanted to produce events, so we still did things like graduations. We were able to do pro bowl riding. We did high school volleyball and high school basketball, and still were able to, you know, continue to bring dollars in there. We did, through the state of Nebraska, receive a grant of two million dollars, which was a huge help that just kind of floated us through that pandemic. But then we'd also put some retained earnings back in toward paying for those expenses during those times, and we've been able to recoup those retained earnings and come back strong. So the staff did a great job of reducing expenses, reducing utilities, and all the things that we should do while still making sure we're able to maintain the building, keep it updated. We did quite a few in repairs, and we were there as promoters, we're ready to start back up, and so we were one of the first ones to be back out and active again.
Thank you for that, and I just, I would be remiss not to, to mention this, and I believe even nationally, compared to other arenas, correct, that we were. believe even nationally compared to other arenas, correct, that we were, you were able to keep our arena going despite all the challenges that we were having.
Tammy, thank you. And it's, and it's really, it's, I get to talk to my peers, and it's a unique relationship that we have with the city, that we have with Jeff Mall and the CVB and NSAA, and those, all those things together just come together and make it. It's a joy to be here. It's a wonderful building, and we certainly like working with you guys.
We certainly appreciate it. So, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? All right. Thank you both very much. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, let's move on if we may.
Item six B is approving the transfer of unspent and unencumbered appropriations between certain capital improvement projects.
Is there anyone here? Here comes Sherri. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sherri Wolf-Durble, the City Budget Officer, 555 South 10th Street. Near the end of every fiscal year, we try to do some cleanup of our capital improvement projects. So departments have made some requests to either lapse appropriations from completed projects or transfer to those appropriations to a new project where they could be used. We've got four requests this year for our ordinance. The first one has to do with some general fund and Keno Fund appropriations in the library department. Parking lot improvement projects at Anderson, Isley, and Walt Branch libraries, and roof replacement projects at Isley and Walt Branch libraries came in under budget. And alternately, the bids for the new Williams Branch Library as part of the Joint Airpark Project budget came in higher than the original project budget. So we're requesting that the savings from the roof and parking lot projects be transferred to the Williams Branch Library project to completely cover the construction costs for this exciting new endeavor, and this will help bring the cooperative plans with parks and recreation to fruition and lead to enhance services to the airpark community. The second project involves some general fund and Keno Fund appropriations for the Parks Department. The funding for the Parks Department projects like ADA compliance and hard surfacing provide a resource to repair and replace cracked or broken concrete and parking lot potholes throughout the year. And park staff would like to transfer remaining funds from this fiscal year to help address issues with the concrete flooring and walkways at Pinewood Bowl as part of that project. These cracks and issues at Pinewood were discovered during the recent renovations, and therefore they were unknown at the time the project budget was developed. These are important safety and convenience issues for audience, staff, and performers. Transfer of this funding allows us to pay for them along with the renovation project and to ensure a safe and enjoyable experience for this important community amenity. Just two more. We also are requesting to move around some of the public safety quarter cent sales tax revenues. The fire station projects funded by the quarter cent public safety sales tax have all been completed and are keeping our city safe with marked improvements in response times. All four projects were completed within the funding allocated to them by the Public Safety Projects Oversight Committee. On August 25, 2020, the Oversight Committee allocated $488,800 of the remaining funds for generators and fencing for fire stations 10, 12, and 16. The generator project is complete, and the fencing project has been bid. We would like to transfer the appropriations remaining from the various stations that came in a little bit under their budget to the projects for stations 10 and 12 to complete the fencing project. And finally, we have a request from the Urban Development Department. Actually, not a request from the Urban Development Department. I'm going to take credit for it because I don't like to have appropriations that don't have any cash behind them. The 2122 CIP includes an affordable housing appropriation that is funded by sales tax revenue from the state of Nebraska, collected from Pinnacle Bank Arena and hotels in the district that surround the arena referred to as turnback tax. The revenue is appropriated at the state level and then paid to the city. The time period this revenue pertains to reflects a period when sales tax revenue was severely impacted by the COVID-19 outbreak. That lowered the number of hotel room rentals across the community and the number of events at the arena. That meant the Pinnacle Bank Arena and the hotels within the turnback tax area around the arena did not generate sufficient turnback tax funding to provide an allocation to urban development for this budget cycle. So just without any cash behind those appropriations, we're going to lapse them. The good news is that we are projecting that we will have adequate funding by 2324 to restore the affordable housing appropriations from that funding source. Are there any questions?
Questions for Ms. Wolf. Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One, thrilled to hear about the turnback tax. Let's keep, let's keep that going. But I have a question about the transfers within the Parks Department to Pinewood Bowl and the transfers within the quarter cent safety to fire stations 10 and 12. And I don't know that I'll need Chief Angler or the Parks Director to answer these, but I might. Let's start with the fire houses. Will the money that is shifted to 10 and 12, if we do so, will that actually finish the fencing projects at those firehouses?
Yes, as the contracts are going out, we have sufficient funding for, you know, borrowing change orders. But yes, that will complete the fencing projects.
And then will the dollars within the Parks Department actually repair the concrete at Pinewood Bowl? Will that be the, the end of that project, or will additional dollars be necessary?
I'm going to defer to JJ. Is that adequate?
It will, it will complete the project.
Okay. I saw head nodding. Testimony. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have.
Yes, Councilwoman McGinnis.
Real quick, do we know if that's the end of the safety sales tax issue for the fire stations? Or we still have a balance?
They will have, I can't tell you off the top of my head, but they do still have some appropriations remaining. The majority of the quarter cent sales tax funding that is still available is in the CAD project, however. Fires are, fire projects are winding down. This is the last one they're really anticipating.
Okay, could you give us that number?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other questions, comments? Sherri, thank you very much, as always. All right, Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
Item six C is change of zone 22020, request of Charx Properties LLC to change from R2 Residential District to B1 Local Business District on property generally located at 2125 Scott Avenue.
Director Carey is coming forward, I see. And who's on deck? Thank you.
Good evening, David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Didn't see the applicant jump right up, so I thought I'd come up and make sure we had that covered. This is an item for a change of zone that would basically allow the existing Dairy Queen to expand to the south, down to the Antelope Creek area. This is consistent with the commercial activity along the South Street, so something that we are in support of for approval. The, it stayed on the consent agenda at Planning Commission and was approved eight to zero. And I can answer any questions you might have on that.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Carey? Councilwoman Shob, we'll start with you then.
Director Carey, you said to the south?
Yes.
Oh, I, this is right there across from Edgar Golf Course. Is that Dairy Queen?
Yeah.
Yes. There's something to the south? I thought it was immediately the Antelope Creek.
I will show you a.
Ooh, can I see a map?
Show you the map. So we have South Street here. This is the existing Dairy Queen here. So it's changing the zoning to that parcel to the south, down to, this is the creek area here. And so what this does is allows the expansion to happen effectively.
That's what I wanted. Thank you very much.
And it's clear from eating as much Dairy Queen stuff as I do, it needs more stacking of vehicles and a better way and a safer way to enter and exit. So, that's true.
Yes, without being biased on this application, it's always a good thing to have more capacity at our Dairy Queens.
Yes, yes. I'm standing up for that one.
More dilly bars.
Councilwoman Washington?
Not that I have anything against Dairy Queen, but I have a couple of questions. Can you tell me in the, the plan that they've laid out, will they be using the same drive, exit driveway, or are they shifting the exit driveway?
This is the plan that came in as part of the application. So effectively, they're going to use the existing building and then expand the building itself as well to allow for their capacity to improve. The representation of the, of the plan that's been proposed is that there will be actually allowing for, it looks like two drive-through lanes.
I saw that.
So, in a general sense, they'll be expanding that, that activity, that capability on-site.
Okay. I think the reason I'm asking the question about the location of the exit drive is that the two houses directly east of it are still residential, single-family, and I'm trying to gauge impact on the neighboring residences, as well as caring where, or having a concern about where the headlights end up when people are exiting Dairy Queen. I have a little bit of concern about the stacking lanes and the parking that faces directly south along Antelope, and wanting to know if the neighbors on the other side of Antelope Creek have been contacted, and are there landscape, is there landscaping that's going to go in that could also block light trespass?
So the, the adjacent properties to this change of zone would have been contacted, so they did receive information about this. We did not receive any, any, any interest or letters or testimony at Planning Commission, so I cannot speak to any positions that someone might have as a neighbor, but they would have received the notification of the change of zone. As far as the requirement for additional screening, they, they would have to screen according to our regulate, parking regulations, but we do not have any additional requirements for, for additional screening.
And the same would be had for the single-family residents just west of it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. When I'm looking at the creek and I go west, south side of the creek, but within headlight.
Other questions? Councilwoman Beckeas?
Director Carey, perhaps I missed it in the stack. I apologize if that was the case. Since the site will be somewhat redeveloped, I guess it looks like it's an addition perhaps to the existing building. Was there any discussion about access onto South Street since there is access onto Scott Avenue for the site, as this site's pretty narrow and has two access points onto South?
Yeah, what I can say to that is that the existing access will be the future access, so that's not changing under this change of zone.
Sure.
For that flow, for the drive-through, as well as access to the parking, where the access points are today, they would remain.
And, and they will be simply adding on to their existing building and not tearing it down?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Any more for Director Carey?
Thank you very much.
Any other comments on this item?
You know me.
Anyone else would like to testify on this item? All right. Seeing none, let's please move on.
Item six D, change of zone 22017, request of Osage Hill Farm LLC, change from AG Agriculture District to AGR Agriculture Residential District on property generally located at 7433 Southwest 27th Street.
David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. I'm stepping up to basically state that the, the related special permit with this change of zone has indeed now been submitted on appeal. At the time of scheduling for this hearing, that appeal had not been, it didn't come in yet. It is in now, and at this time, we would request that we pair this change of zone up with that special permit for the August 29th public hearing for your consideration and hearing. As we discussed a little bit earlier today, if someone is here tonight, certainly we would allow them to speak if they wanted to.
Okay, very good. I appreciate that. Yes.
Madam Chair, in light of what Director Carey has said, I would move to delay with public hearing continuing on this item unless someone is here tonight.
Let's do that part first. Does anybody want to speak first?
Correct. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this? Item six D. Item six D, anyone else? All right, seeing none. Councilwoman Washington, thank you for your motion. I would entertain a second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Rebold. Any more discussion? All right. With that, please call the vote.
Rebold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckeas?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Thank you. All right, let's move forward.
I'll be calling item six E, F, and G together. Item six is approving the 48th and Aylesworth redevelopment agreement between the city and the 48th Street Development LLC relating to the redevelopment of the property generally located on the block northeast of the intersection of North 48th and Aylesworth Streets, and the related fiscal year 2122 CIP to authorize and appropriate $3,185,000 TIF funds for the 48th and Aylesworth redevelopment project, and the related tax allocation bonds for the 48th and Aylesworth redevelopment project in an amount not to exceed $3,185,000.
Good evening, Dan Marver, Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. What you have on the screen before you are two project areas. The red area is the area that we would be, that this, that this item before you is related. The area at 48th and Holdridge was the earlier development that was, that was put in. It's leased up, operating, things are working fine. The only difference between the project that would go, would orient again along 48th Street, and this one is, I think that we'd have more apartments on the first floor. There wouldn't be as much retail. Might be additional bicycle storage. And to give the council a kind of a view of what's on the block currently are some older buildings that are underutilized. What this would put in place would be 115 apartments, mostly one-bedroom and some two-bedrooms in the area. So, but it does clean up a blighted area along this corridor, and I think it would be an asset for that development. The project itself makes a significant amount of investment in energy efficiency. What you'll see in the section here is it's, the specific energy enhancements to the project may include, but shall not be limited to, solar panels and supporting materials and infrastructure, electrical vehicle charging stations, smart thermostats, LED lighting upgrades, high-efficiency HVAC systems, high-efficiency commercial water systems. So there will be a significant amount, and you can see that in the sources and uses list here. There's $470,000 on this project allocated towards energy efficiency. And so that we understand this, there is a building code for energy efficiency. We don't pay for tax increment financing to reach that level. It's to go beyond what is, it was in the building code to make the building more energy efficient. When we brought the plan amendment through here, I think there were some questions by the council about affordable housing. What we might be able to do on this, because this project was a phase two of an earlier development, there had been some things that were in the pipeline. But you'll notice in, in section 404 of this, there's a clause in, in the agreement that is a non-discrimination clause. They can't discriminate based on source of income. So if someone comes to this with a housing voucher, for instance, and they're eligible to, to live in this particular apartment, they, the operators of this apartment project cannot discriminate based on source of income. cannot discriminate based on source of income. Now, I know that Andrew has been waiting to be able to testify on behalf of his client. I can leave it there. If there's any questions of council, I'd be happy to answer them right now.
Councilwoman Rebold?
Director Marvin, is this the first time we've ever included that language on?
No, it is not the first time that we've included that.
Okay.
We've borrowed it, I think the very first time we did that was for Antelope Tower, which is in the downtown. It was about 100, it's a very similar building to this one, 110-unit apartment project, where we put non-discrimination language in that one. We have done that on some apartment projects. I think Hepburn Square included non-discrimination language in it. So, as projects come forward, we engage the developers and see if this is a right fit for them to include that provision.
And then will any of the units be designated as affordable housing?
No. So these will be market rate, these will be market rate apartments. It's kind of one of the trade-offs here. These are market rate apartments, but if someone comes to them with housing vouchers, and the whole housing voucher issue is a little complicated, but if they come to this apartment, the apartment owner cannot discriminate them and say, you can't come in because of your source of income.
Other questions for Director Marvin? All right. Thank you very much, Dan. All right.
Good evening, Councilmembers Andrew Willis, 233 South 13th Street, on behalf of 48th Street Development LLC. I'll add a little bit to what Director Marvin said. So, sort of our, our final step here, we've, we've been in front of you with the redevelopment plan amendment, the PUD was approved, it would extend, it really extended what was the 48th and Holdridge Apartments Phase One. This is Phase Two we're looking at. The nice thing is you can envision it because it will look substantially the same as the apartments on the corner of 48th and Holdridge. It is designed to be the Phase Two of that project. 115 units. It will be, as I said, really, you, the, the look will be the same. It will be adjacent to 48th, facing 48th Street with the parking on the 49th Street side. Out of those 115 units, 80, about 87 are either studios or one-bedrooms, so that's the mix, and then, then some two-bedrooms in addition to that. Plenty of parking exceeding the maximum between, there should be about 130, 131 stalls available, so about 1.14 to 1, again, based on what they're looking at for alternative transportations, plus the fact that it's mainly a lot of studios and one-bedrooms. It exceeds the requirement and should work out well. To, to address kind of the two, what I think of the, I guess, two features of this, really, that have already been mentioned, you know, to promote affordability, the, the trick here is really this was designed as Phase Two. So we have a, we have a project that exists. It was designed to, to really be the same. That's market rate units. These are really designed to be market rate units. The, you know, to ensure accessibility, more people be having opportunity to get into more units, that's where that non-discrimination of, of the source of income comes in. So there won't be any discrimination as far as what type of income you have. It's, 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 it's helpful in the, in the, in trying to create affordability. It certainly is, you know, one step to, to make all, you know, more units more accessible to more people. But other than that, the, the challenge here is that it really is designed, this was designed as Phase Two of what already exists. So the rents would, they're really, the plan is to keep rents in line with what exists there now, and that's, and that's market rate units. One of the other, you know, important factors really in the, from the developer's side is the environmentally conscious design. So, already mentioned, you know, this, this will have, it'll be equipped with solar panels, electrical vehicle charging stations, high, high-efficiency HVAC system, high efficiency appliances, a commercial water system instead of individual water heaters, smart thermostats, LED lighting, low-flow fixtures, enhanced elevators, a lot of, a lot of things. It really is a, it's really a, that's really a focus of, of the development team, to make sure this is as, as environmentally conscious as possible. In addition to that, in addition to those actual features of, of the building, they're also really a focus on alternative transportation means. Obviously, the electrical vehicle chargers already mentioned, but also designated space, a designated space for bike racks, bike storage, really promoting the bicycling from the residents, and then working with Startran on bus stop improvements out front to, to create a better bus stop location out front. That'll have, be working with Startran, but again, really promoting that, the alternative transportation as well. So, that, you know, that is a focus of, of the TIF, but really is a, I think, a key feature of this project when looking at this overall. From a TIF perspective, the overall cost of developments, over $21 million, upwards of, you know, above 21 million right now. Projected valuation at the end is about 15 million, which that's, will generate that 3.1, 3.185 million in TIF. The TIF uses, already noted, you know, these are kind of the standard uses that you've seen before as far as, you know, the eligible uses TIF can be used for. A lot of that's energy enhancements, facade enhancements, and streetscape improvements, these things that really create a project, and without TIF, this can't happen. Without TIF, these, the, those, those improvements just, it's just too costly to build right now, and especially with some of those enhancements above and beyond minimum code. So, we're asking for approval of the redevelopment agreement to allow for this Phase Two, really taking a site that needs to be, needs to be redeveloped and could take something that isn't being used right now and needs a lot of work, and creating something, 115 units of housing that will be beneficial to the community. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I guess.
Councilman Beckeas?
Thank you, Andrew, for coming down. Shirley, appreciate it. The source of income non-discrimination chapter in the redevelopment agreement, you know, that's not something that we, as a council, have necessarily weighed in on at all, but it sounds like your client is acceptable to, to including that. Is that something that they wanted to include from the get-go?
It, it was brought up by Urban Development. That was sort of in the, in the conversation of affordability. That was, it was, that was the, part of the discussion, and, and really, the challenge was because of design budget, everything that had been done, that was there, it really didn't work to, to make units truly, I mean, to create truly affordable units at this location in this project. So that was something that Urban Development raised, and, and the developers were, thought it was a great idea, and were, were supportive of it. I'm happy to, happy to include it.
So it was in lieu of units or a cash payment?
Yeah, right, correct. It was the, it was the, sort of the, the agreed-upon way to, to promote affordability, to promote additional accessibility to units in this redevelopment agreement.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Any other testifiers on this item wishing to come forward? All right. Let's please move on, Madam Clerk.
I'm calling items 6H, 6I, and 6J together, approving the Bishop Heights Phase One redevelopment agreement between the city Encore at Bishop Heights LLC and Red Bishop Heights LLC relating to the redevelopment of property generally located at 4,200 South 27th Street and 4,300 South 27th Street, and the related fiscal year 2122 CIP to authorize and appropriate $6,540,311 in TIF funds for the Bishop Heights Phase One redevelopment project, and the related tax allocation bonds for the Bishop Heights Phase One redevelopment project in the amount not to exceed the $6,540,311.
Good evening. Dan Marvin, Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. Here to bring you up to date on the redevelopment agreement that we have with the Bishop Heights area. I want people to understand, these things don't magically get put together over a short period of time. As Ernie and I were reflecting as we got to this stage, our very first conversations with the red development team was before the pandemic. So, 2019, in the fall of 2019, we might have been having conversations, or it could have been winter of 2020. But a lot has happened. A lot has happened. A pandemic obviously had all kinds of impact on what retail was going to develop, and then we had conversations about the apartment complex, and obviously, there's been all kinds of increased costs in construction. So there've been challenges here, and another complexity is there are multiple players in this project area. So there is the red development on the south, there was Encore Properties, and then the white property, which is an office complex. And if we just zoom in, you can see there's a tight area here to operate on, but I also want to point out to, just take note of, a location here to connect on to the trail at this point, a point to connect on to the trail here. We'll talk a little bit more about trails as we get farther into my presentation, but this particular project is 230 apartments going in, in an area where there isn't any housing presently. So this meets, just like the previous one, many of our comp, plan goals of infill development. Let's try to take the space that we have within the community that we have and invest in residential development where it's appropriate, and this project does that. It won't take the extension of additional roads, or water, or sewer to go into this area. It's utilizing the existing infrastructure. And as a matter of fact, I know the developer has this because at a previous meeting, the trip counts on this particular development will actually be lower, not higher, than what the original ShopCo development was. So we're, we're better utilizing this with infill development, and we're not putting additional overall traffic impact over what was there when ShopCo or Treasure City, if you go back a few years. What will the apartment project look like? And that's the first phase of this. There, it's a beautiful building that they've got situated and sandwiched up next to the trail. And it will also do a number of improvements that you won't see in the TIF calculations, and that is, they'll take care of the overhead power lines that run along the trail, so we'll be able to remove those as well. Was talking about, this particular project also will make a payment in lieu of, on affordable housing, equal to $2,500 per dwelling unit on the apartment project. So if you build over 200 units, the math means that the contribution towards an affordable housing fund will be over a half million dollars. So this will create opportunities to generate additional affordable housing citywide. Why a multi-phased agreement? You have to kind of go back to the very first drawing, and what you'll see is, if this is the area that you're building a large apartment complex, you're going to need areas to stage your equipment to be able to build off of. And so some of the areas that are adjacent to this, which will be future development areas on this property, will really, during the construction phase, be needed for construction. And also, the reason it needs to be phased, these other areas are going to be retail developments. It's going to be hard to encourage retail development, which won't take as long to construct as the apartment project to incentivize them to come on to the site while you're in the middle of a, of a construction zone. Trail improvements. So, the project will make significant trail improvements. Earlier, we were talking about connection points. So, Google is wonderful at how it can give you pictures without having to drive out there. But I know this area because I've ridden my bike through here for years and years and years, and what you'll see is, this is a trail connection, which is a little pad of concrete that leads you on to a parking lot, and then this is the trail improvement connection on to that. What we heard early on from advocates for the trail was, develop a pad site over here, but invite people to come off the trail, show them places where they can come off the trail, and engage in the retail activity that's going to go there. So this is kind of a, a proof of concept of being able to encourage people to come off one of the busiest trails that we have in the city, and engage in future retail development. So they'll be able to come off here, they'll come off here, and they'll be able to come off here. There'll be three connection points that will encourage people to come off of the development, or on to the development. The TIF calculations that you'll see, is how they're allocating money, TIF will provide a significant amount of dollars towards paying for landscaping along the trail. It will pay for the trail connectors. It will require, in this agreement, non-TIF dollars to actually do the first phase of. Whole area along here, not only will the power lines be buried, but there will be the trail enthusiasts. About to wrap up here, but let me show you, will be built over phases, and the design element for this trail came from the Parks Department. So this was nominated by the Parks Department and agreed to by the developer to bring the trail down, and rather than making this curved area through here, they'll create a, a trailhead at this location, and then they'll bring in at more of a 90-degree angle so that they, while I don't think they keep track of crash records over, over in this area, they think that the conflicts between these two busy trails would be minimized. And it will be done over two phases. This is Phase One, so that we can get the trail developed, and then a Phase Two would then put in the amenities for the trailhead, which would include, I think, a drinking fountain, and obviously some shade, and other places for you to be able to rest as you're going along that way. What are some of the protections that we're providing for this? Earlier, this body had a PUD before you, which you voted on, and that PUD set in place some of the conditions that we've talked about here. So even though we don't have retail at the southern end of this building site, for logical reasons, need to be able to stage, need to be able to go out and attract people to come to this location, the PUD will control so that the future development of this site has already been established. And then, at that second phase, when those developments start coming towards you, they will go through Urban Design Committee for review. They will come back to you for review and vote, and go to the mayor for her signature. So we have not short-circuited any of the review process as we go on to a Phase Two, but we've, we've provided some certainty for the developer to be able to build out of his, his site. I'll stop there, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Questions for Director Marvin? Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yeah, real quick, how are we doing the TIF? We're only collecting enough off the Encore property at this point? Or is it a phased TIF project?
It's a phased TIF with the third phase of the TIF being the white development as a, as a far, much more distant.
It goes the Encore, red, white?
Yes.
Is there a time limit on that, or?
What, what, the conversations that we've had is that the apartment project will probably take over two years to complete and get occupancy. So in that timeframe, red will then be going out and recruiting additional retail establishments that can locate in there, and hopefully sync up between the two, because the building of the second phase is not going to take as long as the first phase. The white development would be farther out than that.
Okay.
Councilwoman Washington?
I just wanted to give compliments to Urban Development and to the development team for working through a lot of these issues and listening to the trail enthusiasts who are very passionate about trail connections and trail amenities.
And, and I'm a, I'm a, I'm a trail user too, so I might be. And I'm a trail user too, so I might be...
Ditto.
Biased. But, you know, what excites me about this project is how we can test the boundaries of something new. How do we take advantage of the huge investment that we as a community have made in our trails and use those as retail corridors as well? Not just cars, but being able to invite neighbors to walk down, whether walking north or south or biking. How do we take advantage of those corridors to maximize the investment that we've made and also provide other means of transportation to and from retail areas in a way that's a great amenity for the community and the residents that live in the neighborhood?
Yeah, and also, I just have to compliment on the Affordable Housing Fund and the...
Well, I will...
Directing dollars toward that, because I think it's critically important, and every time someone either provides affordable housing units or directs money toward affordable housing, I am very pleased.
Well, they've been a great group to work with.
Other questions for Director Marvin at this time?
I have one, real quick. It says in the agreement that you'll do the 2,500 times the number of units, and it will be for use in a city's affordable housing program. It's not capitalized, so what is the program that it will be used for?
So, to date, we have had one in lieu of, which would have been Sky Park for 285,000. We're using that for rental rehab program. These dollars will flow into a fund that would have similar parameters, but it could be parameters that provide rental rehab, if that's a direction that we find is the most appropriate use. Or it could help offset some costs that developers who are trying to develop affordable housing are experiencing to help address those costs. And trust me, there's always more costs than there are dollars to...
So we'll have a chance to...
But I think there is an opportunity to do good work with those dollars and maximize the number of future units we can get from that as well.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Beckyus?
Director Marvin, as affordable housing needs are being considered with new development in town, and as your department continues to explore alternative methods, or new methods, for example, cash in lieu of payment, or in lieu of housing, or units, or source of income discrimination, how is your department approaching that particular issue and making sure, for example, that we aren't doing cash in lieu of in certain areas of town and asking for affordable units in other areas of town? Or, I mean, is there a, at this point in time, a philosophy that you're following to make sure, for example, this area of town isn't doing cash in lieu of? You know, because I don't want the perception to be, as we continue down the road, that certain developments don't want affordable housing and are willing to pay out to avoid it? If that makes sense?
Yeah, so I think that, what I, and I think the developers here might be able to explain this far better than I can, but one of the revelations that I've had as an advantage of in lieu of, from the developer's perspective, is the present value or the amount of indebtedness that I can go to actually go build my building is severely impacted if I have to enter into an agreement at a low, below-market rental rate for a number of years. So with certain projects that have the scale of this one, that's a rather difficult nut to crack to be able to provide affordable units in that. We did do that on Vine Street, not because of the location of that, we had a willingness in the developer to be able to secure affordable units for a period of time. And I'm not going to say that the apartment that was built on Vine Street was of a low quality. It certainly meets all of our building code standards and all of that. But the scale and the cost of that particular development, it was a fit for them to be able to provide contractually a certain number of units in there, and it didn't hurt their pro forma in being able to do that. So I think those are the kinds of trade-offs. I think on our ticking scale, we would prefer to have affordable units in the building, but we recognize that that may damage their pro forma, that they wouldn't be able to have a project. So then the second question is, are there in lieu of financing tools that we'd be able to use so that the project can still move forward, but then we can use those dollars anywhere within the community to expand our goals on affordable housing anywhere in Lincoln? And the truth about this one is, this is not, the other complicating factor on, these are not TIF dollars that are the in lieu of, because the TIF dollars have to be spent within a project area that's defined. These can float and be spent citywide, so we have an ability to go to the greatest need and provide those dollars in an area that's much broader than just a defined project area that's over in that location.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Director Marvin.
Good afternoon, good evening. Thank you so much for your patience and perseverance today. We will try to be as timely and quick as we can be because you're tired, I'm sure. My name's Kent Seacrest, 11128, or excuse me, 1128 Lincoln Mall, and I'm representing today, really a three-developer team, but we're bringing this to you in phases. So let's start with EPC, which is Encore in the redevelopment agreement. Terry O'Leary is the chairman of EPC Real Estate Group. He's here to answer any questions you might have of him. The second developer that's on this agreement is Red Development, and Scott Wagner is here. He's Senior Vice President for Development. And then, in case you ask any civil engineer questions, we have Aaron Bright here. This is collectively three developers, and I'm just real proud how three different independent developers came together and created what I call the master plan that is going to be in front of you and can be implemented as part of this project. I wish this would open, so I can run through the slides real quick. This is collectively about a $77 million collective project that we're anticipating. This first phase alone is going to be 40, about $48 million, and this is saying the PowerPoint doesn't want to open.
Hold on one second, we're getting some assistance with that.
Here he comes to save the day. Don't you love this?
See if I can help you on here.
Please, because the icon didn't open. You've got another place to come. There you go. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. So, we have... Boy, this operator error. There we go. So, just some real quick images. This is the fourth public hearing you've had on this project, and yet this is only the first phase, so you get to have a couple more public hearings. But just to remind you, the blight, the redevelopment plan, the plan unit development that Dan mentioned that you had already, and then this is the redevelopment agreement on Phase One. We're starting with the middle, the apartment complex that EPC will be implementing, followed by Phase Two, which is the staging area, but will hopefully follow up. And we're hoping Phase One and Phase Two will come across the finish line for completion in a very similar period of time. And then Phase Three is dependent on office users by the white development group. So this is just bird's-eye view of Phase One, this is bird's-eye view of Phase Two, and then these are the site plans for the... I pushed something, and I shouldn't have pushed something. So we've had EPCs build lots of attractive buildings across the nation, particularly in the Kansas City is their base area. And we have Red, who, if you're familiar with South Point Shopping Center, has been done, the successful shopping center developer of that area. And Dan showed you the images of the building. And what we're doing, other than RB stays and Wells Fargo stays, but everything else is demolished. We have a $2.5 million demolition site prep bill just to clear the deck with this site, and so everything else will disappear. And you can see the old dotted footprint of what the building is today, and the green is the first-phase area. We have worked hard with Planning Department, Parks and Recreation, I want to thank JJ for all his work and others on his team, to coordinate landscaping, berming, all the utilities, the stormwater, we're sharing that, and the trail enhancements. So even though we've done all the master planning, we're just committing at this stage to the first phase, so the other developers have to come in if they want to see their TIF attributes come forward to them. We had quite a bit of neighborhood dialogue. Jane and others participated in our Zoom meetings with the neighborhoods. We met with the board of a country called Neighborhood Association. We met with other neighbors in the area, we've had lots of talks, we've gone to Trails Committee, and I think our hard work has paid off because the room doesn't, I don't know if it has any opposition, but so far, we've been able to have all our public hearings without opposition. And I got to thank the developers because they knew, they realized early that the Lincoln way is to do it in a win-win fashion. Dan mentioned the traffic, less traffic, both at the all-day and the PM count, which is positive. And we do thank the staff because it took a long time to work out all the details, work with the Trails Committee, work with other advocates to make this go forward. We think we just knocked all the key components in the comp plan with this mixed-use project. Infill, we went to Urban Design. Not only did they really like our design, but they liked all our materials, and the Planning Commission was also very, very supportive along with staff. So with that, we'll answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Seacrest? Saying none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Anyone else going to testify on this item?
Might as well say no. We want to hear about what kind of project.
30 seconds, that's great.
This is very good. Terry O'Leary, EPC, 8001 Medcalf Avenue, Obel Park, Kansas. Just real quick, Kent said I was chairman. That means nothing in our company. I'm not any better or different than the maintenance guy. We all have our roles. The younger people in the company said, because I've been there the longest, that you're the chairman now. And actually, when you look up chairman, means you don't really do anything. The CEO, they moved me out of the CEO role, which I'm not sure what it did. But, point is, a lot of times, the chairman are from companies, and our company's not that large, come to these meetings and go, hey, you know, chairman, whatever. I actually, my job is the same as the four or five other principals in our company is, I like to build buildings. I started the company 20 years ago, and I'll be up here, this is my project, and I'm worried about whether the paint color is the right color, whether the stone's put on right, whether the framing's straight. That's, I'm as interested in that as I am the design process. So, and as far as the design process, we've had three or four meetings that everybody's looked at that, and Dan's group, and the, is it the other urban committee, development committee, approved the materials and so on and so forth. And so this is as high-end as anything we've done. If you look on our website, you'll see other projects, but we started in Kansas City, but we've done, we finished a project in Wichita. We like to go to third-tier cities. I don't like to refer to cities as different tiers, but Kansas City is a second-tier city. Maybe it's a third-tier city now, I don't know. Done projects in Flagstaff, doing one in Topeka, Kansas right now. But every place we've gone, it's the highest-end project in that market. And so our philosophy in most of the places we go, we don't want to be, if there was already three of these here, we wouldn't be doing this. We like to be first one in, set the market, define the market, create the market for people to enjoy an upper-end product. And what that means is, it doesn't mean it's out of reach, it's still got to be affordable to people who want to rent in that demographic. But we have people from, you know, 20 to 80 in our projects. It's not like, when I say upper-end, you got to remember that there are apartments that are 50 years old, or 40 years old, or 30 years old, and this is, this is just, when those were brand-new, a lot of them were upper-end. But as they decline, then you're replacing them with, there's a new demand for rental housing because of the lack of access to buy a home, especially now. And so we try and replace these with a nice place to live, with amenities that attract, you know, the users for renting apartments now. So we're creating, we're trying to, our motto or mission statement is create the next experience, so this is our new experience for Lincoln. I will say, as it relates to TIF, some of, about half our projects have some type of incentive, half don't. We don't go into markets and ask for things that we don't need. We, our Red partner, we've done, we're Scott, three or four projects with them as a joint venture partner, did, finished one in Denton, Texas, and an outmarket in Dallas. But we had this under contract for about a year to do market rate, and we actually terminated the contract because it didn't work, even with the TIF. And if it wasn't for us starting a new active adult product type in Kansas City, we're starting two there, we wouldn't have done this. That allows us to tweak it a little bit, go to a different demographic that's a more established demographic with a little more savings, that is selling a home and wants to stay in a neighborhood and stay close to kids, and so on and so forth, that are growing up in the neighborhood, could be two blocks away or a mile away, but that's an example of, a good example of what this project is. So, anyway, that's a little bit about what I do and what we do, so, sorry, that's over 30 seconds.
Just barely, no. We appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for being here, and welcome to Lincoln again. Any questions for gentlemen, for our visitor? All right, thank you. Anyone else want to come forward? Are we good? All right, welcome. We're glad you're here. Yes? What's that?
Engineer.
Oh, I know, we know, engineers, yeah. Bring all your equipment. Thank you for being here. All right, with that, Madam Clerk, can you move us on?
That concludes our public hearing ordinance's second reading and related resolutions. We can now move on to Section 7, ordinance's third reading and related resolutions. Item 7A is amending Sections 5.04.250 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to minors delivering liquor prohibited to revise the section title to delivery of liquor and to include exceptions when alcoholic liquor may be delivered to the consistent with the Nebraska Liquor Commission rules and regulations. And repealing Section 5.04.250 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as heretofore existing, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by McGinnis. Councilwoman Chubb, you are recognized.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to offer a motion to amend Number 1 to this.
Seconds.
Thank you, Madam Councilwoman Raybold. Motion to amend Number 1 actually corrects some language in the original motion. You might remember our public hearing last week, we discussed that in my zeal to do this, I may have made some typos, so we're going to correct that. And then there's also some additional additions. So this motion is a, provides a substitute ordinance to this, and we'll clean up all those things that should be corrected.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Councilwoman Schob. Is there any discussion? All right. Saying none. Please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Thank you. All right.
Main motion?
Yes, we have to do the main motion.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
7-0.
Yay.
Item 7B, amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, bi-weekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the city of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by P, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckus. Is there any discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 7C is amending the pay schedule for employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range, which is prefixed by C, by changing the pay range class 5338, Facility Maintenance Supervisor, from C29 to A14, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded by Raybold. Is there any discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Beckus?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 7D is annexation 22005, application of David Miller and Dorian Miller to annex approximately 2.65 acres, more or less, and adjacent rights of way on property generally located at South 88th Streets and Pioneer's Boulevard, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded by Raybold. Discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 7E, change of zone 22008, application of David Miller and Dorian Miller to change the AGR Agriculture Residential District to R1 Residential District on property generally located at South 88th Street and Pioneer's Boulevard, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded by Raybold. Is there discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 7F is annexation 22008, application of the city of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Department to annex approximately 2.68 acres, more or less, on property generally located at Northwest 48th Street and West Vine Streets, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded by Raybold. Discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 7G is text amendment 22005, city of Lincoln Planning Department proposed to repeal Lincoln Municipal Code section 27.67.065 pertaining to parking in the O3 zoning district, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Seconded by Beckus. Any discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 7H is street and alley vacation 22005, application of Lincoln Planning Department director to vacate those parts of County Road 1208, South Street, within city limits generally located north of Van Dorn Streets between South 98th Street and South 84th Street, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckus. Discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 7I is change of zone 22018, application of Brad Alderman to change from AGR Agriculture Residential District to O3 Office Park District on property generally located at 6601 South 70th Street, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded by Raybold. Discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 7J is use permit 22006, application of Brad Alderman for use permit in the O3 Office Park District on 4.82 acres, more or less, with associated waivers on the property generally located at 6601 South 70th Street, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded by Raybold.
Madam Chair?
Discussion? Councilwoman Washington?
I'd like to offer a motion to amend number one on this item. This will reflect some conditions that were added and approved by the Planning Commission that got missed.
Second.
Putting this together, thank you.
Seconded by Raybold. Discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Let's vote back to the main motion, please.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 7K, street and alley vacation 22002, application of Oleg Stepanek to vacate a public alleyway for the South Right of Way and West Monroe Street to North Right of Way of West M Street on property generally located southeast of Southwest 44th and O Streets, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckus. Discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?